We're just waiting for Tim to return, so give us just a minute.
New Kids on the Block or kids at concert, whatever.
Well, she's I said, well, what time is the concert? You can probably dive in and away because it's like a three hour drive, I think. She might be listening for a little while. She's out already. She doesn't know how to unmute. Hi, Mom. See, I told you. We'll give them just another minute, then we'll start.
Somebody come down the hall.
Ready? Yeah, 5:32, guys. Stand for the punch. Mark Serbrook.
President.
Greg Scott. Cindy David. Here.
Brad Newbecker.
Here.
Ron Vaughn.
Item two, we got public comment. This is for agenda items only. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. We're going to ask everybody who's got a public comment to come up. At least to the chair, so that way everybody can hear you. And this is the first, there's two opportunities for public comment. This is the first one, and this is for agenda items only. Any public comment in the room? Come on up, sir. State your name, where you're from.
My name is Michael Barnhart. I'm the district general manager for Oscoda Area Schools. I'm here tonight on behalf of Oscoda Area Schools to provide some insight into our experiences with Stevenson and Company. It should be noted that due to other obligations, the remainder of our business office personnel, including the superintendent and chief financial officer, were unable to attend tonight, but have expressed a strong desire that I convey the following, not only on behalf of our organization, but on behalf of them individually as well. As a district, we've been working with Stevenson and Company for nearly two decades. As a business relationship that would not continue to exist if there had ever been any indication of unprofessional, inappropriate, or unethical conduct or guidance. Quite to the contrary, our experiences have been overwhelmingly positive and helpful. Scott and the team at Stevenson and Company consistently demonstrated incredibly high levels of integrity in their work with us. Having served as Board of Education president myself, I can attest through unique experience, the high level of confidence that I, as a professional and the district as a whole, have in Stevenson and Company's work product. It is rare to find an outside organization that demonstrates as much passion and dedication to their work as we have found exhibited by Stevenson and Company. In the opinion of Oscoda Area Schools, replacing the strong work ethic, fortitude, and expertise of this firm would be a challenge we would not want to confront. In closing, it is our sincerest desire that we have adequately conveyed the high level of regard we have for Stevenson and Company and their integrity, work ethic, and professional demeanor, which in our opinion has been second to none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your name again?
Michael Barnhart.
Barnhart.
B-A-R-N-H-A-R-T.
Okay, and your title?
District General Manager.
School, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the Oscoda County School.
No.
Oscoda County.
Oscoda County.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very much.
Next, come on up, sir.
My name is Ryan Craft, former superintendent for Hill Area Community Schools. I was the superintendent there when Hill put itself in a deficit elimination plan to the point of $750,000 on a $4 million budget. During that process, I agreed to join the team and work for a positive resolution to keep that district alive. During that time period, I had the privilege of working with Cindy as she was assigned to us from the Michigan Department of Education Office of Finance. She was only one of three people in the state that had the credentials according to the Department of Ed and Office of School Finance to be able to help us in regards to the mess that we were in. Currently, there's only two auditors in the state of Michigan, not firms, but auditors, that the state recognizes, and when a district puts itself in a situation like that, they're assigned. I had some conversation with Cindy today when we talked about a person's ethics and integrity, and I just said to her, is your lawyer going to be standing by your side tonight? She said, no. I'm going there to educate people. But I'd tell you something about the lady's integrity, ethics, who she is as a person. I have the highest regard for her. A neighboring district would not be in existence without her. I've used her throughout my career. I'm retired now. When districts have questions or getting a bind, because I've never met anybody or worked with anybody that has the knowledge of the auditing principles in the state of Michigan the way she does. I wish you well. Everything's a learning experience, but what I've observed her do for that community, for the kids in that community, and for Northern Michigan, I couldn't sit on my duff 100 miles from here. I needed to go voice my opinion. So thank you for your service. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. She does a phenomenal job. She's got an exemplary skill set.
Your name again, sir?
Ron Craft. K-R-A-F-T.
K-R.
Yes, sir. Former superintendent, Hill Area Schools, when they were in that deficit elimination plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Wonderful evening. Thank you for your service.
Any other public comment? No other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item three, appointments. We have 3A, Dr. Quinn, President of Kirtland Community College. Come on up, Dr. Quinn.
Thank you.
Like to thank you for coming.
You're welcome. I'd like to thank you for the invitation. Absolutely. The conversation. If everything works right here, I should be able to share a screen with you. Am I projecting or am I loud enough for everybody else to hear me here reasonably well? There you go. I would hope so. Let's back up here a little bit. Okay, for everybody here, my name is Tom Quinn. I'm the president of Kirtland Community College. Once again, a special thanks to Mary for helping me through the technology here and for Tim for a conversation and discussion here. Tim has suggested I keep this presentation to about 15 minutes, and so I'll try to do that. Let me start with this and give you some information, and I think you folks can see my screen there very well. Kirtland taxpayer district includes most of five counties and parts of four others. I think some, I bring this slide up because there are times I think some.
Are you able to speak up just a little bit? I don't think we have a microphone.
Can I turn on a classroom voice?
Please, that's what they can hear.
Sounds good. Okay, classroom voice in order here. So we're about two times the size of Rhode Island. People don't recognize that Kirtland is the largest taxpaying district in the state of Michigan. Our students come from a broad area by 232 communities, 253 zip codes, 14 states. And if you notice the little map here that some of you were able to see, you'll notice that a lot of the great portion of our students come from along Interstate 75. And since, you know, actually for the people that are historical here, 1972, the governor actually dedicated the last section of 4 Mile Road, excuse me, Interstate 75 here from West Branch to Eldra, I understand. At least that's the information that I've seen. We have about 1,500 students, about 12,500 graduates. And interesting for you, for all of our medical programs, we have clinic sites in about 16 states. Our students who want to travel, want to become located in another state for a period of time can certainly do that. Our students, about 35% have already been to another college. About 17% on average already have a bachelor's degree. They're coming back for an occupation. About 59% are under the age of 24. About 11% are the age 40 to 59. Folks, we have them up to age 65. 38% of them work full-time. I wish some of them didn't work full-time as much as they do because it impacts their studies at times. 31% work part-time. 27% are full-time students. That is very unique for a community college. I wish that we had a higher percentage of them were full-time because life happens when they're part-time. And once you get about four and five years out, they don't always graduate. And of course, it's very important for us that students would graduate. 63% are female. And that's been going on for a long period of time. So guys, you got to step up. We need some more men to get educated in this area. It's just the way it is. We have about 39 degrees and certificates and three transfer degrees. I put just a few of them there. We'll talk more a little bit. Will you see some other pictures here about health sciences and some of the other programs? I didn't list all of our program areas here, but you can get a sense that's what's happening with us. Nearly all of our programs have state licensing or industry standards or certification. And for the commissioners who can see this screen, that's an auto mechanics program. Some of you may recognize even the face there. This program is one or two in the state of Michigan. That is a Chrysler Training Center for Chrysler Corporation. And the students that graduated from Kirtland also received 38 different certifications that allow them to do 80% of warranty work at a dealership. And we have an apprenticeship programs that we're looking to give the ability for the other 20% of work. The other site, by the way, is McComb Community College. Kirtland has one of the highest percentages of students enrolled in technical programs in the state. For those of you who know where Washtenaw Community Colleges, we sometimes battle with them for that status, number one. Kirtland was ranked in the top 10 in the nation for its application of technology to instruction. And you see on the right slide here, you see Jim Eastman, who does a fantastic program with cardiac sonography. You see Pam there, and I don't know why this is switching gears on me here, but you see Pam there with some more of the technology we have, which is a digital cadavers. And I say cadavers, they're plural, and it is one of the most sophisticated machines that we can teach students about anatomy there. For all of you, our faculty are very well qualified. We actually, actually have M.D.s that are teaching anatomy and physiology in some of the medical programs for us. We are ranked number one in Michigan for value and quality of online education and actually number 24 in the nation. And I want to read you just a little student comment from you. I appreciate having wonderful online instructors. And I'm looking forward to my next semester online. We do a superb job in that area, and that provides our students the chance to come, for example, to take courses on Monday and Wednesday, but take online courses on Tuesdays and Thursdays and so that they can reduce the cost of transportation to the college and also work part-time and full-time. So we do a superb job of that, and we've been doing that for about 14 years now. Kirtland Grayling entertains about 5,000 people per month, guests mostly doing training. We had two groups there just today. One was the intermediate school district, and the other one was the Department of Natural Resources doing training. We are now planning for up to 10,000, once we get this pandemic in our rearview mirror, visitors per month. And you are all welcome there, whenever you would like. Our students do very well at a university. And this is some data provided to us by Ferris State University. The cumulative grade point average of Kirtland graduates when they attend Ferris State is 3.31. The cumulative grade point average of all Michigan Community College students who transferred to Ferris State University is 3.87. The cumulative grade point average of all students who started at Ferris State University is 2.75. This is one of the measures that Kirtland uses to evaluate the quality of our instruction at the institution. Enrollment has increased because of our location and our attractive facilities. We are very conveniently, of course, located on Interstate 75. Kirtland is an affordable institution, and I want to say we use that word. The percentage of students receive some form of financial aid, and I'll show you what my little coding here is. Normally between 90 to 95% of our students receive that. Last semester was 92%. About 77% last semester received a Pell Grant, which is money they do not have to return, not alone. The average, the maximum Pell Grant that students can get, according to the federal government, is now 64.95. The average Pell Grant that students are getting at Kirtland is about 44.35. And the average cost of attendance at Kirtland is about $4,560. We are very affordable. A student told me the other day, he said, I paid my tuition. He took out one dime, paid his tuition. That's what it cost him. What Kirtland's. About 29% of our students are receiving scholarships, and Kirtland is growing its foundation to provide more scholarships. And if you're interested in providing memorials, we have some options for you, and we certainly welcome you to talk to our foundation director. A little bit about tuition and fees, and I know that folks are interested in that. All of our taxpayers receive a discounted tuition of $126 per credit hour. That was, that's what you pay, that 126. The non-taxpayer rate is $187. If you want to put that in perspective, our full-time students are required to take 24 to 30 credits per year. I highly recommend 30 credits because that's what can transfer easily to university. So ladies and gentlemen, you know, that's the tuition cost for you. I want to mention here too, that if students go to other community colleges, these are some of them in the area that students are sometimes interested in. If you notice the column on the right side, for example, Alpine Community College at $7,320, that is the yearly cost for non-taxpayers attending that college. What you see there, and the very bottom is the 4560 and highlighted, that is the cost for one year of attendance at Kirtland on average. So we think we're affordable and it's a good option if you live within this district.
But that's not a fair table. I mean, because the price there you have is taxpayer rate for Kirtland Community College. The other, unless I'm reading that wrong, the other four colleges are for non-taxpayer.
That's right.
Okay.
So if you call some. It's not the same comparison.
Okay.
But it is, I consider, an economic choice. You want to go someplace else, that's what it's going to cost you. By the way, that's from the federal government information. If you go to a university, I just want to produce a little bit of price comparisons. Again, I'm bragging about the affordability at Kirtland. This is a snip from Saginaw Valley University. It is a very good university, and it is a affordable university, by the way. Cost of attendance from their website at $11,580. Cost of housing and meals at $11,106. So the total cost at about $22,686 for 30 credits, or about $756 a credit. A good place to go, and you happen to be fortunate that you're relatively close to that, that university. We transfer credits to them easily by Michigan Community College procedures that we handle things. If you would like to go to Michigan State University, the Land Grant College, another good university. I circled it there, tuition and fees at about $14,914. Again, from their website, room and board, $10,676. Total for two semesters, $25,590. That's from their website, ladies and gentlemen, snips in various versions of it. Another very good university. We automatically will transfer 30 credits there, and if we have articulation agreements, 60 credits or two years' worth of work to Michigan State. Now, we have some free college courses that are offered in high schools that transfer to Kirtland or a university. It's commonly called dual enrollment. Those courses are free to high school students. They're taught by Kirtland professors. They're in the high school or on campus. They're online or onsite. And Kirtland has refurbished some of the classrooms in public schools. And I think I'll stop there with that. We refurbished them because it gives students a better experience of what Kirtland would look like. And of course, it equips our faculty members with the technology that they're used to when they're on campus. So we make them exactly the same. The percent of enrollment, I know some of you are interested in this, and you can see the table there. Roscommon County has the leading numbers of students here in last year totally. 18.7% of our total student population. Ogumah County is 17.2%. You're come by the bigger counties in our surface area. And you can see what that looks like. I didn't include all of the counties. Their students are represented there, but just give you a snippet of information, what that looks like. Actually, Ogumah County is a little bit up, but they normally are pretty consistent in that 15 to 16%, 16% of our total population comes from this county.
I'm surprised that's so low with it being in Crapper County now. It surprises, the percentage is so low.
They're smaller district, smaller population base. And then older population base. So not only the size of the population, but the age of the population of the college-age students makes a considerable difference. Dual enrollments by county, this is what you will see. And if you notice, Ogumah County had 93 students in high school courses that are taking courses at Kirtland. We're pretty proud of that. We want to thank the local public school system for participating in that because that course provides students a good jumpstart to the university or to Kirtland. Remember that you have more than one school district in this county. You have also Whittemore Prescott, so that number is spread out realistically between the school districts. And you have a presence here of Charlton-Heston Academy in this county also. So it's just a number by county, what it wants to. Roscommon, of course, has two public school systems in that county that are operating, both Hilton Lake and Roscommon itself. I've switched gears for a little bit. I'll just show you a couple of things that are new at Kirtland here. Something that has been a chore for us for the last couple of years, we got our students through the pandemic. And we have been very tough about that. We've had face masks for quite a long period of time. We have had vaccination clinics and incurred vaccinations and those sort of things. The good news is, we needed our students to stay in classes, and we did quite well. And got them through the classes as best we knew how to do. The third building at the campus is now open to the public. That's the event center. And there are other classrooms and instructional areas in that, including the auto mechanics program. I just want to brag a little bit. We've also had some students from, some young people from West Branch there, Little League baseball at the Kirtland Event Center. And it was interesting for me. I actually opened up the doors to help everybody in on Saturdays, evenings, and Sundays. It's fun to see the little kids there and the kind of things they can do. They can throw hard folks, a lot harder than I would have thought. We have sold at least for a cell phone tower on the Roscommon campus, and we've taken some of that money and used it for matching funds. So for the folks that will, for example, want to provide us a $10,000 memorial or a donation to the college, we put $5,000 on top of that from that fund, and that gives them an endowed scholarship in which the interest bearing from that provides a regular scholarship. We don't touch the principal in that process. And we encourage our staff members to contribute to those scholarships, to increase the numbers, actually. Kirtland is now the northern training center for Michigan police officers. Again, our competition is at McComb Community College of the Detroit area. The coursework that's happening there is quite interesting and quite significant. And we're pretty proud of that. We're now negotiating a DNR sponsored shooting range on campus, and you actually see a site plan here. For those of you who look at it, you can see where that shooting range would be. We think that's going to happen, and that would be open to the public. Anybody would like to be there, and of course, our students. We would reserve spots for that for our police academy, our corrections officer programs, and of course, our criminal justice students. We have plans for new housing. Bad news, recent, the costs have gone up. Oh my goodness, has it gone up? It's crazy up. So we're looking at these as learning communities where students in a program would be put together so that they're learning all day long, and even when they're having pizza at night and whatever else. The dual enrollment has increased, and we're really proud of a couple of local public school systems that we work with, Hilton Lake and West Branch, Rose City. Both of those school systems have increased dual enrollment, and I think to the advantage of the parents and to the students themselves. We have some university partners. Saginaw Valley State University provides us a bachelor's science nursing program. Two years at Kirtland. One year at Kirtland with Saginaw Valley State University, plus some additional work, equals a four-year degree in nursing. Now, for the accounts are here, three plus one or two plus one equals three, four. I didn't get that right, did I? But that's a little bit, my math is a little bit off, right? But that's the way we've got it configured. Grand Valley State has matched us with that. Northwood is a partner in business, and Ferris State University is a developing partner for all of the trades programs that we have. So they're very interested in that, and we provide them an office so they can invite students on those programs. September, we have a new corrections academy. I don't know, is what Ogumah County going to send cadets to that corrections academy? I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I guess I should.
At this point, I don't think we have any schedule for that school.
Yeah, but it's available. Four county sheriff's departments are looking for training, four weeks long. You see a clip of a listing of a job posting there. You notice the salaries up to, well, 1912, up to 2929 per hour. For a four-week training program, it's authorized by the Department of Corrections. I think it's going to be interesting for us and serves the needs of our local police departments. We have improved our scholarships. I'll just brag on Matt and Christine LaFontaine. Actually, I guess I could say the number, I don't think they'll be mad, $50,000. A nice scholarship program for students in auto mechanics programs. We are going to start women's and men's basketball here starting in fall. You see part of a camp going on as some of our student athletes are already helping young people, actually eighth grader, eighth graders in a camp. We have truck driving school, 100% pass rate, 100% job placement. Only thing that's going wrong with that program is that company doesn't help provide enough instructors as fast as we need to. A real headache for us right now, and I have been on their case about that. So to complete this, and I hope I'm not too far over 15 minutes, and I rattled on pretty fast. I'm sorry about that, but as I said here, you've got Kirtland. Welcome students to all of our communities. We take care of them. I'm pretty proud of the faculty, the staff at Kirtland, and the work they do.
Are you okay to take questions from Commissioner?
I can do it. I can do a couple.
Commissioner Serbrook.
Daniel Quinn, can you just enlighten me as to what the mindset was from moving from Roscommon to Grayling? Was it the facilities there, were they too old or were they just not completely located? Or what was, what was the impetus for you guys to take and move the campus?
You got it all exactly correct.
Okay.
For location. And it was set there, as near as I can tell. Well, a lot of reasons, certainly politics, you know, to try to get a spot where everybody could vote for it. But let me give you an example here. I see some concrete block walls here. I could actually show you a picture here if I had wanted to. Here, eight inch concrete blocks, no insulation. Constructed by the state of Michigan, not by local taxpayers. Constructed by the state of Michigan, not by local taxpayers. Heated with fuel oil.
So the infrastructure was lacking, obviously.
Yes, and quite frankly, it's oversized. This new facility is shrunk in its academic size to something that's more manageable.
Footprint small.
Yes, it is.
Cause I know the campus up there was, you had buildings and you had those great big walkways and stuff. What's, what's the plan for the Roscommon campus?
It's for sale.
It is.
Yes. I, I can't talk too much about the details of that because we have interested buyers. And I can't get in the road of our Realtor on that one.
Right, understandable.
Any other questions, Commissioner Serebik? Commissioner Scott?
I have none.
Commissioner Nebecker.
I can't think of anything right now. I'll reach out to you if I have anything.
No, no problems. You got my, my card. Um, not an issue there.
Um, I guess I, I don't necessarily, I guess, have a question. Of course, the millages have been a hot topic.
Yeah.
A hot topic, um, for Ogama County residents. Can you offer? Um, I guess I'm not exactly sure what my question is, but if you have a resident asking you a question about these millages. Cause a lot of Ogama County residents are very upset about the, the move. Um, upset about the millages where there's no sunset. I guess what, what, what do you say to them?
Well, first of all, I can, I can tell you what my tax bill looks like.
Okay.
So initially it was approved at one point zero 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 six digits out mills for operations at Kirtland Community College, not for the facilities.
Okay.
Headly rollback has now reduced that down to by pay something in the neighborhood of point eight two. That's for operations and it reduces the cost for the students and we need students in this area. The next millage that was approved by all of the taxpayers in the total district was for one point five. That has been reduced to one point two six, as I recall from memory right now. And guess what is going down because of headly, headly way that works? It's going down again, this from compared from the last year to this year is going down because guess what? Our property values are usually going up. So headly rollback reduces that. The third millage that folks have approved and, and voted for by the folks in Ogama County is for the first building on the Roscommon campus. It's point one, two mills. Now I pay one point two, I think I pay one point two, three for gypsy moth control. I pay, uh, point five, five, I actually got the numbers, I could look it up for you. Um, I'm paying about seventeen something mills for Hilton Lake High School. I'm paying about, um, another six mills that goes off to the state regarding local public school systems. My opinion is this, and about two points, one mills. By the way, the, the, the building is expires in about fifteen years. So that point one, two mills, and it was a renewal in assets. And you really can't use that word renewal. You know, my opinion is pretty inexpensive for a community college. Compared to other things that, that I'm paying, paying millage for.
That's fair. I don't, I don't, from what I hear and then I'll be, again, I appreciate you for coming. I appreciate you coming, um, to us. I, I guess it's not necessarily the amount, it, it was more the, the move that, from what I hear from Ogama County residents that they're, they're most upset about.
Well, um, and I have, uh, please don't, um, my answer may be a little bit of a, abrupt, I suppose.
It's okay. Go ahead.
Everything's a half an hour. I looked at my clock and I got, I got out of the, I had some other business in town to take care of. Uh, it takes me about a half an hour to get to, to West Branch. Takes me about a half an hour to get to the, the campus. The mileage is a little longer, but the time is about the same. And guess what? It's safer. And I have gone to funerals to bury students. Um, of students that died on some of those roads that weren't plowed, weren't taken care of. I'm not so worried about them on the interstate. This is a very safe campus. Um, it is very efficient and, um, it'll last for a long time.
It's a very nice campus. I, I have made a jump up there.
If you made it, yeah. And I'm going to offer right now, and I hope for, for Mary can help us out that if anybody would like to visit, I'll put lunch on. I've said that before, I'll do it again. I would prefer you would come when the students are there in greater populations than, most of our classes are online now, except a few program areas. But if you could come in September, I think you'd find a very interesting conversation to meet students from West Branch.
I think I seen a, is there another building going up right now? What is that? I didn't, I see further construction.
Uh, there, we're really pretty well done now.
Okay.
We are looking at student housing, but I don't, I don't know what we're going to do because the class is so high. It jumped up a hundred and fifty percent.
I have one. Obviously, probably a lot of thought that went into that move to move farther north. Um, can you remind me or give me some history on, um, on the top of our district for community college? Um, did that change at all? Like, is Gaylord included in that district?
We include Gaylord in that district because yes, they are a taxpaying district. Now, they do not pay as much taxes, but their funds that they pay there are used only there.
Only in the Uptech Center?
Only at the Uptech Center.
Okay.
I guess where's that center?
Galem Tech?
Gaylord, Gaylord.
Okay.
Over by the high school.
I didn't know that. So their taxes go just for that building?
Yes. And they have, they also pay taxes for the university center there, which is really defunct as a concept. We manage that university center.
But do they get to come to the Grayling campus at, in, in district cost?
No.
They don't? Okay.
Okay.
It'd be out of district.
Good question. That's what I wanted to ask.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any other questions?
That's a misconception. There's a lot loose about the land here. No, they pay, matter of fact, they take online courses. They pay out of district, out of district.
So when you moved the, the actual district, the, the area didn't change as far as who's paying what?
Still the same.
Don't think it changes the physical location of the campus, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Nothing else really changed. A good portion of the programs came with us from Roscommon. Um, I guess they all did now that I think about it.
Is there anything still functional? I know the, the police academy was still using the old Roscommon.
Yeah, we use it for scenario training.
Okay, and they still, the range is still there?
Yeah, the range is still there and the truck driving school is still there.
Truck driving schools are, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
Thank you.
Everyone doing aviation still, I know.
We do not.
I know back in my day, which has been a couple of years ago.
That was quick before I came there.
Okay, cause I knew that they were, had a hangar up at Grayland that they were doing some stuff.
Sold that program and actually saved money and put it into new programs.
I was just curious.
Thank you.
You know a lot about the college.
I went to, I went to Kirtland.
Did you?
Mm-hmm. I did.
Okay.
Kirtland Grand.
Stop in again.
I will.
Bring, and bring friends.
And bring friends. I don't have, I don't have very many of those, so.
If you decide to come, please bring all the staff members who would like to visit us. That would be appreciated.
Thank you.
I have to run to another meeting.
Perfect. Thank you for your time. I forgot, guys, do you have any agenda items or, or to the agenda, anything to add or change?
Um, I did have one thing, we are, at the end of the closed session. I was wondering if we could, uh, delay that so that we could have a better chance to meet with them first. And then we could, uh, reconvene in a closed session, maybe in a couple of weeks.
I don't, I don't have a closed session on my agenda.
Or else.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I also have not had an opportunity. Um, we, we missed each other on Friday, Tim. Um, and then I think you were out of the office. I know we could have did it by phone, but you were out of the office one or two days this week, right?
One already and another one tomorrow. So, yeah.
Are you okay with moving that to next, till next week? Okay.
Or two weeks if you want to do it at a count.
Hopefully two weeks, cause I'm going to be out of town.
We won't have a meeting in two weeks.
Three weeks, yeah.
Oh.
Thursday.
Okay. Yeah, there are.
That's right, I'm sorry.
I wanted an update on the Red River Drainage, so I'll put that in his F. Cause I talked to Don and, uh, today after I spoke with you, our, our legal counsel, and he said that he, he issued an email or a statement.
He sent me an email. I have not had an opportunity to even open that one yet.
Oh.
It's packed up. There's like forty of them in my inbox, so we'll get into it.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections? I apologize, I missed that. Item three B, Brian Gilbert Sheriff related to new hire. Come on up, guys.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, just want to get out there that we have a, a great opportunity to hire a local resident that has, uh, family members that live here in the community, have, uh, roots in this community. So we suspect that this individual will stay here for a very long time and, um, but we're going to need your help to make it happen and Paul will explain. Here we go.
Thanks for the lead in. As the sheriff said, new hire candidate, uh, does have three years MCO certification experience with two different departments. Uh, this candidate is, uh, trained as a field training officer, uh, and does have additional training. The family does have local ties. Um, so we feel that that's a, a strong point, not directly to Ogama County as a municipality, but just in the community as a whole. Um, this candidate is, is a good police officer. Uh, we think he'd be a good addition. Currently, the way the contract is written, uh, three to six years would translate to twenty-two fifty for a starting salary. What we're requesting is to give him a one for one for his years of experience, which would translate to twenty-four dollars an hour with the contract. Contractual issue and financial, we, we come and ask the commissioners what they felt about that. Especially during these trying times to have an opportunity to add another certified police officer to our ranks is few and far between as it currently stands. So if there's questions, I.
How many positions do you have open right now?
Currently, we will have, or right now, currently with the current staffing levels, it is one. Uh, cause that will give us the, the number of the deputies plus the one school resource officer and the secondary. Unfortunately, we have one deputy that is on deployment with the National Guard and her second deputy unfortunately is back out. Uh, recovering from the injuries with the, uh, but that would give us the number that is currently for the staffing assignment on last year's.
So right now, there's one position.
One position that would be this.
Posted.
That for this one, that would fill it up and then we'll talk more about during budget time as far as staffing levels and any of that with the new school resource officer, but currently that would fill that last position.
I mean, do I think an officer should be making twenty-four dollars an hour? Absolutely, a hundred and fifty percent. The problem is again, is the timing of this, just because we just went through union negotiations. I mean, what kind of rippling effect is this going to have with the other officers, with the other union members?
With the current union members that we have, it really does not affect any of the current members. Um, our two deputies that had the years of experience went to maximum five years. And then the only other officer deputy that we had had one year experience and was moved up to that one year experience when the contract was settled. So the rest of our deputies are all new hires or started with our office. So really that doesn't have any effect on the current personnel. There would be no other deputies that would even have the ability to come and question that as far as experience levels.
I, I guess I got, I'm sorry, I guess I got, you said max five, but then I thought there was a three to six year block.
So what I'm talking, I probably should have sent this over with the contract, but in the contract you have one to five years for the, the rate of pay. The years of experience is in a sec, separate table that goes with that. So we're talking new hires that come in with previous law enforcement experience. And that table is set up for one to three, three to six, six to nine. And then I believe it's ten and up, getting maximum pay and the maximum one kind of short on, but. So the three to six years experience as a new hire by contract comes in at twenty-two fifty. Six to nine by contract comes in at the twenty-four. So the, the problem or the question becomes with the union, do we do a one-time deal to bring this potential employee in at the twenty-four dollar? And then it remains the same unless we come back to the commissioners and ask in the future. And it would ultimately be something the commissioners would have to, if we had another case similar to this. But this is a one-time. Uh, what do they call that?
It'd be a memorandum of understanding.
Memorandum of understanding.
Commissioner Serebik.
Have the opportunity to discuss this issue with the sheriff and the under sheriff, but I am totally in favor of it.
Because?
I think it's a great opportunity and I think, um, I hate to see this one slip away. And I know who the individual is and I think he'd make a greater asset to the sheriff's office, especially with his FTO certified already. I mean, it's not like he's coming in off the street with no experience and or no additional training under his belt other than just MCO certifications. So he does have additional specialized training, um, that would be an asset to the office.
Commissioner Scott.
The sheriff and under sheriff asked for, to meet with the personnel committee, Mark and I. And we met with them yesterday. They laid a note, good. We did question the reaction we may get from the union, cause we, they have not spoke with the union. Nobody has spoke with the union yet. So I, I think we're at a tentative on how the union will react to this. Um, whether they'll want more or a trade or, I don't know, you know? So I'm okay with it. Tentatively to, to what we hear from the, from the union.
So I guess I'm not.
But I don't, well, I don't want, I'm not going to go with it if we're going to have a ripple effect after, you know?
So that would be my question is, is are we, prior to us making this decision, can we get something in writing from the union?
We would require that. I think what the sheriff and under sheriff are doing right now is gauging whether you're even interested as a board. If you are, then we can approach the union, we'll draft a memorandum of understanding, present that to them and ask if they would agree to it. If they don't, it's all, it's all off.
Okay.
Commissioner Nebecker.
Uh, we briefly discussed this, um, with law enforcement committee. We didn't meet, but we just, just discussed it. I didn't think about this yesterday, but field-trained officer, is that described in the current contract? And what do you feel that training is worth once they complete it?
Well, the field training officer, it's about seven hundred and fifty to seven of them in school. Uh, and then that's basically investing in the future in the office. Uh, that, that officer, that deputy is going to be training any new hires and that type of thing. So, you know, the value is very high for a field training officer, someone that has that ability to be able to continue to mold new hires and new MCOs officers. So to not, one, have that expense with this as a new hire. And the two, to have the experience drawn that he does, I think helps our office immensely in, in future planning, especially with new hires that may come out of the academies.
What is my thinking is, is that would be something that I think would be, uh, a reason to pay an officer with that experience level. More money. And I, I'm just wondering if that's something that maybe needs to go into the contract in the future. Um, if you are field-trained, uh, field-trained to train other officers, then.
We, we are, if they're, if they're currently acting as still trained officers, there is stipend that they get during that period of time as FTOs.
Yeah. Well, if you're talking about to try to lure someone with that training, I don't want to say lure, but try to attract a, a potential new hire that already has that training.
Yeah.
So they don't come out of.
Sorry, um, I guess that's my, my concern is to, I, I could appreciate the fact that it's a local person. Um, but at the same time, I don't want us to seem inconsistent. Um, cause that could open us up to liability. Um, if we're going to do this, I think it's got to be a structure change to justify that pay level.
We probably can't do that when the unions with the contract, can we? Can we do what Brad is, is requesting?
We'd have to negotiate it.
Yeah.
If we were going to do something like this, we don't do it right now, but, um, maybe that's something to consider. And we tried to envision all of the different possibilities, like you've mentioned. I mean, we did deal with the field training. envision all of the different possibilities, like you've mentioned, I mean, we did deal with the field training officer internally and provide that premium pay for those who serve in that role, but I didn't even think about bringing somebody in that's already trained and and ready to go, so something maybe to consider next time around.
That's not part of the, I wasn't on the negotiation team, that's not part of, uh, the contract, it's just your, it just goes by years of experience, no other training is involved in in the rate of pay?
Well, it does the years of experience, but like with the field training officer, they have to get the training to be a field training officer. And I think what Commissioner Newbacker is saying is, we find somebody already has that training, we don't need to make that investment, they've already have it. So then we bring them forward, but if we bring them in to to, I mean, I'll use a more broad term, poach somebody else's department to bring somebody in with that training, about the only leverage you have is money, you know, to do that, so that'd be something, I think if it looks like it's within your field, uh, something that's would give us a leg up, maybe something to consider.
There's just, there's a ton of specialized schools, I can't even imagine trying to filter them all out, because I mean, you know, obviously if you had a precision driving instructor, firearms instructors, you know, you got the FTOs. You got, you know, the guys that are forensic, Brian, you're one, come on, give me- Evidence tech, thank you. You know, evidence technicians, there's just a so many specialized schools that would be fantastic, they can have those, but to try and list each and every one of those in a union contract to say, you know, we're gonna, you know, I think that would be
Can you-
A nightmare, cause we're gonna miss some, no matter how hard we would dig into it, we would miss some.
Well, there should be a catch-all, I mean, somewhere in there, but can you explain to me a field-trained, like what what's a field-training officer? So this isn't something that's mandatory for an officer to-
This is, this is an additional, so a field-training officer is the officer that, uh, when a new hire is hired, that field-training officer will then, for the period of twelve weeks, take the training deputy or officer out on the road and and show them the ropes, basically, so. That that whole field-training program that's developed for our office and for police departments across the state, so.
But a deputy doesn't have to get field officer-trained?
No, and he, some officers aren't interested in it, some of them don't want the added paperwork, the stress of training, a new, a new hire, a new person.
How many, how many field-training officers do you have? How many are field-trained on your staff?
Currently, we have three, this would make four, but the two are the lieutenants that have graciously come back to the road to do some of that training for us currently, so we have one deputy that's field-trained officer. This would give us two, and we'd like to send, or we're gonna send Colburn, well, another deputy, I'm sorry for using the name, but so that we would have deputies that were field-trained officers, so we can get the lieutenants back into their positions with the detective administrative stuff before they start wrapping up their careers. So that was, that for the future, the office, you would have three at this point with the plan.
I I think we should ask for a letter or something from the union before we make a decision on this.
I I support it as long as, uh, we're not gonna have any backlash from this, but, um, going forward, I think we gotta make sure that we're gonna be consistent with this, though. It can't be because of the person, it's gotta be because, um, a set of-
Criteria.
You know, that that's important to you, that's the reason why you want this person.
I agree.
I'm concerned about the timing, again, I agree, twenty-four dollars an hour they should be making, especially for what they do and where we're at in the world, but, uh, I think this is gonna cause rippling effect.
Well, we can reach out to the two units or to get a hold of the the main unit person and get an answer on that sooner rather than later, so that we know coming into next week, if there will be anything, but obviously, we'll get that answer from the unions and go from there.
Perfect. Anything else, guys?
That does it, I think. That's it, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Item three, audit discussion, we've got Stevenson. Come on up, guys.
I don't know how to do that, um, Mary, and so we we did that earlier and it was a success, so.
So I don't know.
This is a USB, though, so it's not laptop.
Right.
Plug it in.
He's listening.
I can take the mouse out, um. That will, one of these works for moving it forward.
I'm just gonna do it.
Oh, well, look at you. Um, go, you need to go back to the main USB, and it's the packet. And if you can just make it full, one-page screen, that'd probably be easier.
Introduce yourself?
Yes. Like to hand out some stuff, too. This is what's gonna be on the screen, but I wanted.
Thank you, missionaries to have a copy.
Thank you.
Cindy, would you like to move the rounds? Sure, absolutely. You can put it in the mailbox. Okay.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Cindy Scott, and I brought Bob Moran with me, and he's a partner in our East House Office and Don Brandon, and he's a partner in our East Office, East House Office as well. I know many of you know me, but just to make sure that everyone in the room and on the call does know me as well, I did include a resume. And I'm gonna go ahead and read it, just cause I know not everyone can see that. Cindy has almost twenty years of experience in public accounting with a specialization in the audits of school districts, local units of government, and nonprofit entities. She obtained her Bachelor's of Professional Accountancy degree from Saginaw Valley State University, and subsequently obtained her Certified Public Accountant's License and Certified Fraud Examiner's License. Cindy is a member of the Michigan Association of Certified Public Accountants, the American Institute, I I apologize, the Michigan Association of Certified Public Accountants, the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, the Governmental Audit Quality Center, the Michigan School Business Officials, and the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners. In addition, Cindy sits on the Accounting and Auditing Referent Group and the Single Audit Referent Group for the Michigan Department of Education. Currently, Cindy is in charge of our school, local government, nonprofit, single audit, and forensic teams. Cindy attends a multitude of trainings each year from auditing and accounting classes, including the governmental and school accounting updates, as well as forensic and fraud-related trainings. She conducts considerable research on all of the current issues and standards, and then prepares the and presents the in-house trainings for the rest of the firm on all of the new issues and hot topics. Cindy has a good working relationship with many of the personnel at the Michigan Department of Education, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Michigan Department of Transportation, and the Michigan Department of Treasury. So when controversial issues arrive, she is able to work through the situation with MDE, MDHS, MDOT, and/or MDT. In addition to auditing, Cindy also provides compliance testing of federal programs for MDE, that's the Department of Education, and other forensic work for our clients, including internal control reviews, forensic investigations, and various trainings for clients' personnel and board members. Recently, Cindy also began working directly with the Michigan Department of Treasury in a consulting role, working with entities identified by the department as needing additional assistance regarding procedures and best practices. So I do apologize, I'm typically not a reader, I like to just talk to you, but given the amount of information we have to cover and we don't want to take all evening, I am going to read the majority of this, but I do have the slides that we'll go through, so that way we can make sure that everyone knows and can see what it is that I'm referring to. So to start, oh, I'm sorry, how many municipalities do you, I guess, is that somewhere in here? It's in my notes.
Okay.
But that is the next thing on my list. So every year, at at least in the last, I went back eight years of looking at our client listing, and in the last eight years, every year we have conducted between forty and forty-five governmental audits. We also have, we've also done a peer review and undergone a peer review every three years, with our most recent peer review being in twenty-twenty, all of which have been positive peer reviews without finding. To talk through the timetable of what brings me before you tonight, on May twentieth, I received an email from the county administrator requesting a meeting with myself, him, and the new treasurer to discuss future audits. On May twenty-third, we had that meeting, and I brought Bob Moran with me, and the county clerk sat in the meeting as well. Tim expressed his concerns regarding the audit rotation and asked our thoughts on canceling the engagement, given no termination language in the contract. We said that we are not interested in doing that, given that we have frozen our price for so many years for that long-term engagement, but we would be willing to explore rotating audit partners. On May twenty-sixth, Bob emailed Tim that we would in fact be willing to rotate the audit partners, with Don Brandon being the new audit partner on the engagement, and with Nathan Millet taking over as managing in charge. On May thirty-first, Tim called Bob Moran and left a voicemail asking him to call him back. And then on May thirty-first, Bob called Tim, and Tim said that he was still uncomfortable with the situation. He believed that the county would like to move in a different direction, and the reason for his phone call was to discuss how they could do it, do just that. Tim stated that it would, that he would like to, he would like us to terminate the contract, he thought that would be the best way, and that for us to put that in writing. Bob told Tim that he would have to meet with myself and Don Brandon about this request and call him back. On June first, Bob left him a message to call him, and then followed up the voicemail with an email stating that we are not interested in terminating our audit contract. I believe, and I will state first that this is, this piece is my opinion. I believe that the biggest issue that we're dealing with here is that there is a misunderstanding with the new treasurer, the new clerk, potentially some commissioners as to what the responsibilities of are of the auditor versus what the responsibilities are of management, which would be your department heads, your elected officials, your county administrator, and what the responsibilities are of those charged with governance, the Board of Commissioners. According to MSU Professor Ken Verberg's book, Guide to Michigan County Government, there are three major roles of a county commissioner, setting policy, legislative oversight, and constituent services. Mr. Verberg then goes on to say that the role of a county administrator, that their duties and responsibilities range widely among counties, depending on the circumstances within a county and the wishes of the board itself. But we find them working in the same areas as the county controllers and county managers. County administrators direct or assist in budget development and monitoring, have a charge of purchasing, building operations and maintenance, personnel, collective bargaining and others, under other staff functions, and they assist the board in defining administrative and policy alternatives. On the contrary, the AICPA standard state that management is responsible for the preparation of the financial statements, and the contents of the statements are the assertions of management. The independent auditor is responsible for the expression of an opinion on my, on management's financial statements as to providing reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement, whether due to error or fraud. These responsibilities are communicated each year during the audit process in multiple ways. The first way is in a planning memo that is mailed to every commissioner before the start of the engagement. I just have a sample, Craig, you're the lucky winner because you were on top. But I have a sample on the screen, and this would be page two of your handout. And this is just an excerpt of a three-page document that is sent to every commissioner before the start of field work, where we go on, and first off, we talk about the responsibility, and it says in paragraph three, "As stated in our engagement letter dated November fourth, twenty-twenty-one, our responsibility as described by professional standards is to express an opinion about whether the financial statements prepared by management with your oversight are fairly presented in all material respects, in conformity with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. Our audit of the financial statements does not relieve you of your management responsibilities." The letter does go on to tell the the reader when we're going to be on site and and ask if you have any questions or concerns, to please touch base with us, and that's our opportunity for planning the audit to determine what are the concerns and the risks that are going on with the commissioners, so that we can plan the audit accordingly. Do you guys agree you all seen this letter this year? Tom, if you can go to letter B, it'll, you'll see it be in the top corner, I think you gotta go two more pages. There we go. So then, the second way that these responsibilities are communicated are with the engagement letter that is signed every year. And you can see here, I have the copy of the twenty-twenty engagement letter. And Tom, if you can scroll down a little bit to where you see I have the red box, twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-one. So in the engagement letter as well, it details out the audit objectives, I'm not going to read this again, but it is right there. And then if you continue to scroll down, Tom, you'll see that it also details out the management's responsibilities. It is very thorough to make sure that it reiterates over and over again that our responsibility as auditors is to issue an opinion on these financial statements. The contents of these financial statements are the responsibility of management and those charged with governance. The audit report, if you'll go down, Tom, to letter C. The audit report again includes a statement on auditor's responsibility versus management's responsibility. Again, I will not read it, I just want you to see that it is stated in there very clearly. And then finally, in the audit presentation every year, I know many of you have listened to me present numerous times with numerous boards, and I always start every presentation with talking about the responsibilities, and I hold up the report every year. So I do want to make it, make it clear that we try to relay that very clearly, time and time again throughout the audit. So now I I have bullet pointed out the accusations that were made that I was able to pinpoint during your last meeting. And I'd like to just go through them one by one with our response to those accusations.
Well, yeah.
Well. Yes, we are going to be, we're going to be on D, yep, you're at the right spot, Tom. So the first accusation, the audit is not transparent. It's just a facade for showing the negative cash as a liability, and that those journal entries, while acceptable, were not best practice. I'm sorry.
What, what part of the paper are you on?
I'm, I'm just reading this to you, you don't have this in your handout. Your handout are, are my support.
All right.
This is me reading it, too. That's all right. Do I need to reread that, or are we good?
Yeah, reread it.
Okay. The audit is not transparent, it's just a facade for showing the negative cash as a liability, so that the journal and that the journal entries, while acceptable, were not a best practice. This is not a best practice situation at all. This is the, this is a correct versus incorrect situation. Showing negative cash on the financial statements as a negative asset is incorrect and would not be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles or governmental reporting requirements. If you look at page two-hundred-and-forty-four of the governmental accounting, you don't have this page. Of governmental accounting and auditing, um, financial reporting, it's also known as the blue book. You will see, let's scroll down to this, right, right down there where it's highlighted. So this is page two-hundred-and-forty-four of the blue book, which is what your financial statements are required to be issued in accordance with. If we don't, if they're not issued in accordance with this blue book, we cannot issue an unmodified opinion. And the part I have highlighted is a section where it specifically talks about pooled, in that pooled cash funds. It is not uncommon for a municipality to have one checking account that covers multiple funds. It is not uncommon that it, at times, or at all the time, that some of those funds may run as a deficit when there's enough cash in the other funds to supplement it. It becomes an issue if that fund as a whole becomes a deficit fund balance. But as long as the checking account as a whole is not a deficit, it is completely acceptable and allowable to have one fund be negative. The piece I have highlighted, I am going to read, this is how to report the negative fund balance, or I'm sorry, the negative cash. Sometimes an individual fund overdrawes its share of pooled cash. If so, the overdraft should be reflected as an interfund liability rather than a credit balance in an asset account, AKA negative cash. Likewise, an equivalent amount of some other fund's position in the pool should be reclassified as an interfund receivable. You cannot show negative cash in your financial statements. It is not allowable, it is not acceptable by GAAP, it is not acceptable by governmental accounting standards.
Have we had it? Have we had negative GAAP at the end of the year? Have we had it? Have we had negative GAAP at the end of the year?
Absolutely. There's been that situation throughout the year, throughout the years for many, many years. I, and we'll, we'll get to where, where it's been documented. But I've sat in many committee of the whole meetings in, in the past where the former treasurer sat down with his cash report that he would hand out. That would say the general fund cash balance is negative this. The delinquent tax revolving fund cash balance is this and all the other funds' cash balances this. And you sum those three up to give you the actual total cash balance. So yes, it is a situation that, that's been out there. But, but what we're responding to is that the accusation that we, we deceived the public. By moving that negative cash to a liability. And we're saying that is the proper way to report it. There's no other way to report it.
Your job is to only report it. Your job is not to tell them what they kind of can't do.
Correct.
But you, you didn't advise them to do anything with it.
You have us contracted in an auditing capacity, not as management consultant. Right, we have to be very cautious that we are not making management decisions or appearing to make management decisions. And again, that practice is not unallowable. It's not unacceptable. It's actually very common. And we're going to get to the thought process behind the different ways in a minute. But for this piece, I'm showing that the financial statements are accurate. And that moving for financial purposes, financial reporting purposes of negative cash to liability is the required format, not an option. This concept was also communicated in writing with Kerry Vaughn, the director of audits with the Michigan Department of Treasury. And he confirmed as well that it was how it had to be and should have been reported and that any other way would not have been acceptable under GAAP. The second accusation that was made is that it states that. I instructed the treasurer to post the journal entries to clean up negative cash and then reverse it so that the state would not see it. This implies that I tried to commit fraud with the financial statements that were submitted to the state. And it is absolutely not the case and it is a defamation of character. It was reported in the format that it was required to be reported in. The concept of reversing journal entry is to just assist management in their reconciliations to help make it easier for them. But they are not required and it's management's decision whether or not they want to post those entries. You are not required to post any proposed audit entries. That is why we give them to management to review, to accept and to sign off on in writing their approval. Before finalizing the audit report. So going on with the journal entries, the next accusation ties right in. It was said that the treasurer, the county have no option. They have no choice but to post our proposed entries. And again, that's not true. Management must review, approve and accept all proposed entries prior to the audit being finalized. In years past, any question proposed entries would be discussed at length. Between the treasurer and the auditor, potentially the clerk and the auditor, whomever the entry affected. And there would be times that we would sit down and discuss them and need to adjust them, need to delete them. Need to rethink about them and that happened several times over the years. One way that we make sure that we have documentation supporting the acceptance of those journal entries. Is by looking at the signed management representation letter. Tom, will you go to E, please? If we keep scrolling down to number eight. This is a management representation letter that was signed by the treasurer and the county administrator. And number eight says, we are in agreement with the adjusting journal entries you have proposed and they have been posted to the accounts. We then include, you can go ahead and just start scrolling down, Tom, until you get to the next letter. You're going to see that attached to this letter is every single journal entry. And that you'll see the signature right there being accepted and approved. Next accusation, and I think Craig, this is going to get into what, what you're more curious about. Allowed, I allowed the county to operate with negative cash and did not inform the commissioners of the negative cash situation. First of all, it is operating a pooled cash account with various funds within that pooled cash account. Having some of those funds be negative is allowable under GAAP. It is up to management to determine how they would like to operate a pooled cash fund. And it is the treasurer's responsibility as to how to invest the funds of the entity. The county treasurer is authorized by the Michigan constitution and state law to serve as the county's banker and investment officer. The treasurer's primary responsibilities are to safeguard public funds and to collect and account for the revenue used to operate programs for county residents. I believe this is more of an issue of philosophy and operating style. The difference between the former treasurer's operating style and the new treasurer's operating style is that the former treasurer. Wanted to invest more money, which then resulted in the general fund checking account running in the deficit. Where the new treasurer wants to not show that negative cash, which will result in investing less. Neither option is wrong. Neither philosophy is wrong. But it's management's decision to determine which way they want to operate the county and the county funds. It is our responsibility to make sure that the information that is included in the report, whichever direction they go. Is accurate and free of material misstatement. Yes.
I'm losing a little. A little bit in all this management. Where did the commissioner fit in on the manager part? Cause I've been through the, what, five audits? You and I have sat down in this building. We've sat down in your office and back and forth. I want to know if there was some level of management that kept me from knowing something.
I'm going to show that I had documentation of where the commissioners were made aware of this year after year.
Not made aware.
Documentation that it's what you were made aware of it. Whether or not, and this is not in any way a knock, whether or not everyone understood what they were being given. I, I can't say that, but I, is in writing, it is right there.
Cindy, how many commissioners met with you this year?
Before the audit, I was able to meet with everyone. At the conclusion of the audit, I reached out to all the commissioners and I believe only two met with me. I reached out requesting a meeting with everyone. So. If the auditors were to determine how pooled cash should operate for the county, that would be considered a management decision. That would impair our independence and we would be, we would be looking more as a consulting capacity than an auditing capacity. If you look at F, can you scroll down to F for me, Tom? This is just an excerpt and I know it's small, but this is from the yellow book. Which is the federal guidelines of what services we cannot do. Or we would be impairing our independence and we'd be moving into that management role. And it's very specific on management responsibilities and this is one page of many. But I wanted to include it as a resource. We cannot make those types of decisions for you. It has been said multiple times that the board was not made aware of negative cash. While it is possible that they may not have understood everything that was provided to them. They were made aware of the negative cash balances many times over the years. I have sat through many committee of the whole meetings in the past. And listened to the former treasurer go through the pooled cash balances, including the negative cash balances being held in the general fund. Here are just a few examples of minutes that have been, that are in writing on your website over the last few years. I went back to two thousand eighteen and saw right where I have it highlighted in yellow. It's county treasurer Dwight McIntyre's report. He stated that the revolving fund cash balance as of July sixteenth, two thousand eighteen is three million fifty thousand, one hundred thirty-six dollars and two cents. The general fund cash balance, fund one oh one, as of July sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. Is negative three million four hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. He also provided information on current investments. If you go to the next slide.
I can remember some of these. I'm not going to say I can remember this particular date. But I can tell you, if somebody tells me we're negative three million, Craig's asking a question. Now, I know that minutes don't reflect everything that happens in a meeting. But Craig would ask a question. Now, I've asked that question many times and I was always told that we have not collected all the taxes yet. The taxes will come in and cover this, this, this minus. That won't reflect in any minutes, but I can tell you it reflects in my mental. I was told, not by the auditor, I'm not saying that. But I was told by people in this county that the taxes will come in and cover that. And we will not have minus. Okay, that's my, my take on this. I know you won't see that highlighted in, in, any, any. Any, uh, minutes, you know, because minutes don't cover, uh. Questions and they don't cover, uh, uh, emotions and, and, and things like that. Minutes don't do that. Uh, I'm not saying the auditor did it or not did it. I'm just saying that when, when somebody told me there, there was a minus there, Craig was asking a question. And I've been told over and over again, the taxes have not been collected yet. And if it was July eighteenth, eighteen days before that is when the taxes, tax notice went out. So for sure, there wasn't a hundred percent of the taxes collected at July eighteenth. So somebody told me that when those taxes come in, that minus gets covered. All right, I can, I'll say that directly to you, but the whole world's listening.
I, I think her only point of all of this was that, that this was stated in meetings.
Okay, and my whole thing is that not everything in the meeting gets stated. I, I, well, hey, 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 I don't, I don't. She's saying that I'm aware of it being minus because it's in the minutes. I'm saying that I was told that's not in the minutes, that this gets covered. Okay, so how it, how it comes out in the end of the watch, I'm not sure. But I'm not a commissioner who sat there and looked at a minus three million dollars and, and said nothing. Now, whether or not people care about that, I don't really care. I care that Craig was asking a question.
Cindy, go ahead.
Thanks.
So if we scroll down then to H, Tom's there, I grabbed a meeting minutes from two thousand nineteen. It does not list the dollar values, but it does show county treasurer Dwight McIntyre prepared the cash report. I'm sorry, presented the cash report to the commissioners. Again, I just wanted to show that those cash reports were being presented to the committee of the whole meetings. Now, according to the former treasurer, once the county hired the county administrator. He began verbally keeping the county administrator up to speed on those cash balances on a consistent basis for him to relay to the commissioners. I can't state one way or another whether that transpired. That's not what I'm suggesting right now, just that that's what we were told. And then one other thing that we do every year with the audit. Is we provide an internal control matrix that's several pages long to the. Those charged with management and I believe it typically makes its way through several different offices. For them to provide us with how do you control things and what internal control procedures are in place. Tom, can you scroll to page nine, please? One of the questions on this report says. Right there. What information is provided to management and those charged with governance in order for them to review operating results of the entity? And what was provided by the county said, monthly budget reports, general ledger activity reports and balance sheets. If you're receiving balance sheets, then you'd be receiving those cash balances, whether they're positive or whether they're negative.
Who's asking this question?
That is a blank form that when we first go out into an entity, it'll have the question on the form. For the client to give us their response. And then every year we provide it back to them for them to update.
And who, who is, who made this response?
The previous, in twenty twenty. Twenty twenties audit, that would have been the treasurer's office and the clerk's office between the two. They would fill it out, pass it around. I can't speak to how their internal process went through that, but they would get it back to us.
That's all I'm asking. That's fine. Because one of the things that I've asked from day one is reports on how things, what things look like today. My former jobs, I was, I had, when the main office called, they would say, what's your numbers today? And I hadn't had them though. I've asked that over and over here and I have not gotten it up until just recent. Just recently have I started to see those, those numbers and those reports. Up until then, I was told I can't get them. Now, that's not, I'm not saying that's a reflection on the auditor, but we're looking at a big picture here right now.
So then another way that the information is relayed, and this would be J, Tom. Is that every year as part of the audit report, there is a separate footnote included to show all of the interfund receivables and payables. This is all the funds that owe other funds money and we have a spreadsheet included every year. That details out that information. Now, I mentioned a minute ago that the former treasurer informed me that once the county administrator came into play that. That became his communication mechanism for the cash situation. So that would have been in, in the twenty-twenty audit. And it was apparent throughout that twenty-twenty process to me that there was confusion regarding how cash was being handled and the negative cash. And what a negative cash situation on the financial statements would look like. So in the twenty-twenty audit presentation, we included, you can go to the next slide, Tom. We included a specific two, two slides of the PowerPoint for negative cash. We explained what negative cash was and how it's reflected and how you can't show those negative cash amounts that are highlighted in yellow. But that if you scroll down, Tom, just a little bit down below, it goes to zero, but a liability pops up for due to other funds. So we went through that in great detail during the twenty-twenty audit presentation to make sure that everyone fully understood what they were looking at. Another statement that I would like to make is that I know that there's been comments. That when negative cash was brought to my attention, that I apologize. And I want to be clear, my apologies as very sincere are because I know that the treasurer's office now. Has had a very challenging eighteen months because there's been so much change and so much pressure on that office. You have new people in that office. You have a new software. You have a new chart of accounts. And I know that the stresses and the pressures have been so challenging. And so my apologies have been for their frustrations, for their struggles, for those stresses. Not that we have done anything in error in our audits because I do believe that we have the highest standard in auditing. And I will stand behind everything that we've done. Something else I'd like to do and I'll try to, oh, go ahead.
Are we, are we now counting our money differently? That's twenty twenty? Do we manage our money differently, you know?
Huge data migration would be a coming on board and we all know the struggles that we had with that.
Okay, but with BSNA, do we count our money different? Do, do we, our methods?
Well, there was.
This, this was.
Changes.
This is why.
There's allocations that had to happen. There was a. But, uh, there was a lot of change there and it was a, a very challenging.
Going forward in, in the, in the years twenty, twenty twenty, twenty thirty, are we going to? Manage and count our money different than we did from ten to twenty?
I guess explain yourself further.
Well, I'm just, well, we're looking at two different, I'm looking at two different tables here to count the same thing. Right? Are these numbers all the same thing?
Tom, can you go ahead and scroll back up again? What this is telling you is that in that, go, go up to the top one right there. The trial balance that's originally provided for the audit. would represent that top grid where it shows negative cash, 589,484. But because of generally accepted accounting principles and the governmental accounting standards board, we cannot issue financial statements that look like that because that's not in accordance with those laws. So the laws state that in this situation, you move that negative asset to a liability. So in that, but
How long do you move that liability?
Well, for the financial statements, the reporting purposes. In all actuality, the county doesn't have to report that in their trial balance at all. It's just a reporting situation. But I know that the counties always wanted to make sure in the past that their trial balance matched the audit perfectly. They wanted to always be able to go back and see, which is why we would suggest that they go ahead and post that entry and then reverse it, because if you don't reverse it, then when you're trying to do your bank reconciliation, it's not going to make sense. This is just for reporting in accordance with GAAP.
Just to send the report to the state, we do this measure. The next day after we made the report, we switch it back to what it was before.
Correct, because it is just a
Is that what you're telling me?
Yes. And that is the correct way to do it.
And the state accepts that?
Yes. The state is fully aware of that. That is the correct and accurate way to go.
Okay, now, this top spreadsheet I'm looking at, is this the way we were doing it before?
I'm not sure I understand what your question is.
Well, are both these spreadsheets really the same numbers? And then we're just, we got
Yes.
Tom can jump in anytime he wants. I mean, is that correct? Is it just two different ways of counting the money?
It's two different ways of presenting the financial statements.
Present the money.
One is in accordance with GAAP, one is not. It's the same answer. It's just the state will accept one, the state will not accept the other.
The way that we
Standard, yes.
The way that we counted our money in 2017, will it be different in 2024?
The auditing standards of how to report cash have not
Not the auditing standards. I mean, how?
I don't think I can answer the question the way you're stating it.
Okay.
But the way that the accounting is being reported, those auditing standards from 2017 to the 21 audit we just had have not changed. The government changes all the time though, so I will not speak to what's going to happen in 2024.
Can't this also look differently when you have two different individuals with two different practices?
Absolutely.
That's why your question isn't fair, if I'm understanding this correctly, Commissioner Scott. Because we're talking about, like she stated earlier, you're talking about two individuals with two different ways of practicing, and neither one is incorrect.
Absolutely, that is correct.
So we're going to count our money differently then?
I am, I would not
That's not up to her.
No, no, no. Then we could end up counting our money differently.
I think that the practices of the former treasurer versus the practices of the new treasurer are most likely going to be different because they're two different people with two different management styles, with two different thoughts on how things should operate, and that's their right. As their elected official, by their power given to them by the state of Michigan as the treasurer of the county, they have the right to operate their department legally, however they'd like to. And they have chosen to do it.
You can count money, you can account for money differently, not by a state standard or?
I don't think that's a fair question, because I think the reality is, is cash is
No, I didn't go to school for accounting.
Commissioner Scott, her job is not to count the cash. No, I'm not So then why are you asking her the question? She doesn't count cash.
Because right now
She reports the cash.
Right now, this is the source I got, okay?
But you're asking a question that she can't answer over and over again.
I'm trying to ask it in different ways, just like we're counting the money differently.
Hey, Tom, could you scroll to the top of that page, the frame right above that? Right there. Now, Cindy, this is the 2020 audit, and as I recall, the fund balance that we showed at the end of the year was zero. That's right.
That shows zero, yeah.
When I look at this with the general fund, the top number, the negative 589,484. Here's my interest. I look at that and I think, okay, maybe that's the real number of the general fund. At the end of 2020, September 30th, 2020, instead of having a fund balance of zero and breaking even, we were really behind by about a half million.
Well, cash fund balance does not always equal cash. For fund balance to equal cash, you would have to have no other assets like receivables that you're waiting on and no other liabilities like accounts payable to go out. So for cash to equal a fund balance typically only happens in your very small funds that don't have any activity going on. So in this situation, there are other assets and amounts that were due from other funds that brought the assets up to $885,000. So then you take your liabilities out, and right now, if you see the due to other funds, it's only at $96,000, but your ending fund balance is zero. Tom, go ahead and scroll to the bottom sheet, please. Now, in this situation, because now we cannot report to the state a negative asset, it's not allowed. If you look at that liability due to other funds, it went from $96,000 to $685,000, which is the way the state requires it, because we're saying, okay, if you're borrowing cash from other funds, so you're not in the negative there, it's really a liability. Oh, somebody that money because you borrowed another fund's money to pay your bills. But your fund balance is still at zero. Your bottom line has not changed.
So, Tom, I'm going to bounce you back up again if you could. And I'll say this in my career, I've not seen negative cash. I've just been fortunate enough where we've not had that situation. I'm very worried about that, because I see that now as, you know, in terms of the forecasting moving forward. Now, I see a hole, a half million dollar hole, and I appreciate what you've done here with the zeros. I'm not questioning that, but I'm trying to get myself into the real world. I see that, and I say, I've got a problem. You're bigger than I realized. Is that off base, or does this kind of?
I think that this is something that you need to be looking at as an administrator of the county and as a commission board of the county, you need to be aware of where your fund balance is, what makes up your revenues, what makes up your assets, and so on. I think the confusion is that the confusion is that it's being relayed that because the audit report was presented in the way that's required by the state of Michigan, we're somehow pulling the wool over your eyes, and that's absolutely inaccurate. We have made sure that the commissioners were made aware of this situation every year. And that's why in 2020, when I no longer saw those dollar amounts included in the committee of the whole meetings, I made sure we included it in our presentation to make sure that everyone was on the same page. It's not my place, as your auditor, to say you've got to change how the treasurer's handling the cash. That's not our place. That's his choice. That's his philosophy.
Well, you know
Yes, no question.
No, no.
You know
There is an area, there is an area for public comment at the end of the meeting, but this is commissioners and them only.
As long as I've been a commissioner, we've been taking money out of the tax revolving fund to balance the books.
To balance general fund.
To balance a general fund. Oh, is that a fair statement?
I don't have in front of me the spreadsheet that details out all the years, but I know that you and I have sat down many times to look at what's the average growth? What can you safely pull? There are some years where you've pulled a lot, and I've stood in front of the commissioners and said, you're safe, and I apologize, I'm kind of winging it on the numbers. But I remember saying something along the lines of your safety amount, your comfortable amount that you could be pulling out without affecting your base is 350,000, and you pulled over 600,000, something along those lines. And making you aware to say, I'm just making you aware, this is your choice. But if you continue to pull that much out of this delinquent tax revolving fund and put it in your general fund, you're going to deplete it. And I know that that was a concern of yours, that we've talked about at great length. And so I made sure to communicate that.
Okay, because that's, in the first couple of years, it was, it was, don't worry, Craig, not from you, others, don't worry, Craig, we made enough in interest to pay that. Then we went beyond the interest. We were starting to get into the principle of our tax revolving fund.
I don't recall if it was
Then the state stepped in and came here. And not all commissioners got a chance to talk with the state, but they told us that we ranked 83rd in the state for a fund balance. And there's only 83 counties here, so we're right on top of one end of it.
I don't recall if it was the 2019 audit or the 2020 audit, but I do recall the year that the county determined to transfer over a significant portion over to the general fund to balance. And I do recall having the slide up there to show you. If you do this every year, you're going to deplete the fund. So I agree with you in those concerns and that we made sure we shared those and communicated them publicly.
And the board did react to that. We are on our four-year plan to wean ourselves completely off from that. So that message was received. But back to where I was starting from, again, I'm thinking about, as I look at this, I'm starting at zero, and I see, I'm talking specifically the general fund. And I see a number like that, and I'm thinking, I'm really not starting at zero. I'm starting way under that. And then, of course, that starts to affect my thinking going forward in terms of what we need to be doing. I'm just really, as you look at that, I mean, you've already said you'd be concerned, but am I kind of on the right track here? Am I really?
I think you're analyzing it, and I think you're analyzing it in a good way. I just think that
Well, it gives me great anxiety. I don't
I think that that's what management should be doing. It's just not our role. Our role is to make sure that that information is accurate, that it's fairly stated and free of material misstatement, and that it's reported in a format that's acceptable to the state under GAAP and under the governmental accounting standards.
Well, I got to tell you, I guess I just haven't understood it all over the years. Now, you're telling me it's absolutely legal for county government to take negative cash, we'll hide it, put it in another account for a day till we can send a report to the state of Michigan that says everything's hunky-dory. And then we can pull that number back out of that other account and put it back in as negative cash flow. That's an accepted method of doing it.
Yes.
And the state of Michigan has no problem doing that.
That is the way you have to do it. But I think what you're missing here is if you, if you overdraw your own personal bank account.
Yeah.
If you overdraw, you write a check, you bounce a $50 check, and you're $50 in the hole with the bank, you owe the bank $50.
Oh, but that's a different fund.
No, a liability is just that. It's you owe. This is showing that the general fund owes the funds that it took the money from. Correct. That is what a liability is.
The next day, we still, but that last day, we showed that we didn't know that.
That's not true. It shows it as the liability.
Okay, all right, all right.
What we're finding here is some misconceptions on our part. And maybe a need for us to maybe reach out to a consulting firm to get some training, because that is not the job of the auditor.
How many counties are in this minus cash flow situation?
I can't give you a number to that, because I don't know that number.
Municipals
Running, running a negative in a pooled cash is not uncommon. I do see it across the board, across the state. When it becomes a concern is when the cash account as a whole is negative, because that means that the other funds don't have the money to supplement it, or when the fund as a whole goes into a deficit. Those are the two situations that are now a problem. And now we have a compliance issue that needs to be dealt with. But just choosing to have your money in an investment account and not in a checking account, so long as the checking account across the board has enough funds to cover all of the bills of all of those funds, that is allowable.
And so this county has never, we've not had an issue with with being behind in our bills or being in negative.
In the times I've done your audit, you have, I do not recall ever a deficit fund balance in general fund, do you?
No.
And I also don't recall at the end of the year, a negative cash. Because your fund balance was zero.
Okay.
That's a different, I mean, that's different. You weren't a deficit, but you were zero. You had nothing to, I mean, you were a flat line.
Well, I don't like to be, I don't like to be here as a commissioner and can have people thinking I'm responsible for this and then try to explain to them, oh, it's okay, it's okay to be negative. I don't know, my checkbook, it's not okay to be negative. Brian will probably send somebody over to my house to get me.
The checkbook is not negative.
Okay.
A fund, a portion of the hole in this situation is what was negative. And the only argument here is that you cannot give the report, the state a report that shows a negative in the assets is not allowed. So instead of showing a negative asset, it takes that exact same number and says, we owe another fund these dollars. It's the same information, it's just reporting it correctly, because any other way would be wrong. Now, that has nothing to do with the philosophy of how it was being handled at the county. And again, that's a management's decision of how they want to operate that. Our job is to make sure it's reported correctly, and that is the correct format.
Go ahead, Cindy.
So something I'd like to do, and I'll do this as quickly as I can, but I'll go into more detail if you'd like me to, is if you look at the next slide, Tom, and I got to scroll down. So, right, can we make it smaller so we can see the whole thing? What I did here is I wanted to go back 10 years worth of all of the work that we've specifically done in the cash accounts. Oh, no, that should be in there. Yeah, it is. It's L. I apologize, it looks like it printed the wrong way in your printed copies. So what this is showing, and I won't necessarily go line by line, but I want to explain what it's showing. And I can email you a good PDF where it doesn't cut it off on you. But what I've done is I went through what was the unadjusted reconciling difference per the bank reconciliation that we were provided at the start of the audit. And then what were any reported deficiencies? What type of high-risk testing did we do? Why didn't we do testing if we didn't, and who it was communicated to? And starting in 2011, there were no high-risk, I'm sorry, there were no prior year findings in the previous year, so we did not do any high-risk testing, and there were no findings that came up during the audit. The difference was a difference of $124.47. In 2012, there were no prior year findings, so we did not initially plan to have to do additional bank reconciliation testing because there were no previous findings coming in. However, the reconciliation was not available at the start of the audit. So we then decided to do some testing, and we provided a material weakness in our written report to say that that bank rec was not ready the first day of the audit. Even though, if you look, it was reconciled within $354 by the time the audit was done, it needs to be ready when we start. It needs to be done timely. And so we wrote that into our, into our report. And we spoke about those findings in person with Gary and Dwight on February 11th, 2013, and then presented it publicly to the committee of the whole and the regular board meetings. In 2013, because we'd had that material weakness in the previous year, we went ahead and did additional bank reconciliation testing, and we found errors in the reconciliation. The ending difference was 15,311. And so we again put in writing a material weakness recommending that they get on top of the bank reconciliations timely. That was again communicated with Gary and Dwight on February 17th, 2014, and then presented publicly at the Cal and regular board meetings. In 2014, again, we did the high-risk additional testing because of previous findings. And we found that the bank reconciliations were good. They were accurate, but an unreconciled difference had been allowed to flow through all year. So we did include a significant deficiency in writing that we needed to not just allow that large difference to flow through, but it was progress because they were being, it was a consistent difference every month. That was communicated to Gary and Dwight on February 6th, 2015, and then presented publicly at the Cal and regular board meetings. In 2015, we tested the area again because we wanted to make sure it was still solid. And we found that there was just an immaterial unreconciled difference. And we found that there was just an immaterial unreconciled difference. It was small. So we moved that down to a verbal comment for that year and we spoke with Gary, Dwight, Colleen and Karen on February twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen. In two thousand sixteen, again, we wanted to do the bank rec testing again, make sure we're good. We found immaterial unreconciled differences, kept it as a verbal comment, and we spoke with Dwight and Colleen on December sixteenth, two thousand sixteen. In two thousand seventeen, we had had two years of accurate bank recs. So we just did not do additional testing and the bank reconciliation showed a difference of only two thousand one eighty-two and forty-seven cents. In two thousand eighteen, we had no prior year findings, so we did not do additional high-risk testing. The difference was seven hundred thirty-five dollars, sixteen cents. But we did find that the district court and the sheriff posse accounts were not being reconciled. So we put a written comment into our report regarding those. In two thousand nineteen, the difference was four hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. The prior year finding only related to district court and the posse, so we did not test anything but the district, as a high-risk test, anything but district court and posse, and we found that the district court account was still not being reconciled. So again, we made a written, written finding. We spoke with Gary and Dwight on February twentieth, two thousand twenty, and then presented it publicly at the COW and regular board meetings. In two thousand twenty, we came in at the beginning of the audit. There had been, the prior year finding was only in relation to the general bank account. I'm sorry, was not in relation to the general bank account. It was just in relationship to the district court cash. So we did not anticipate having to do additional high-risk testing. However, the reconciliation was not available at the start of the audit. And given all of the transition, we were concerned because we're coming in to do an audit and, and they're, they're several months behind. We were concerned. So on day one of field work, I went to Gary, I went to Dwight, and I went to Tim, and I had meetings with all of them individually of my concerns of the bank recs being so far behind. The treasurer's office worked on them throughout the audit and they were able to get them reconciled within five thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. But we did, because they were so far behind, deem it necessary to make a material weakness goes in writing and all of our written findings, go to the feds, go to the state, go to, go to the county. We spoke with Tim, Breck, and Karen on February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and then presented those findings publicly at the COW and regular board meetings. So in two thousand twenty-one, because of the high-risk issues in the previous year, we did deem it necessary again to provide bank reconciliation testing to make sure that the reconciliation we received was accurate. A reconciliation was provided on the first day of field work. However, our testing found multiple errors in that reconciliation. And the original reconciliation that came to us, I believe, was in the ballpark of six thousand dollars off. But once those errors were rectified, it was seventy-one thousand four seventy-five. Now, I do understand that more things have been found since then. This is just relating back to the audit time.
Sydney, why, why do you think that big jump?
I think that it was a perfect storm with a new software, new people, new chart of accounts. And I think that it was probably a very difficult accounting nightmare in that office trying to get everything in there. I know that the credit cards were a huge challenge, the credit card payments that come in and getting those recorded into the system. So I cannot speak for exactly why it's off, but my anticipation would be that it's accounting error. It's something not getting entered that should have been entered. When you're that far behind on bank reconciliations, it's really hard to see what's missing and to catch those things. So the next accusation. Old revolving funds still being on the books. Um, it is management's responsibility to open and close funds. I know I've said a lot, responsibility, responsibility, and it's just really important that we understand that as auditors, it is not up to us when you open a fund, when you close a fund, when you transfer dollars from one fund to another and so on. That is management's responsibility. We are to audit the funds that you have open at, and at the end of the year and the information that you have in your trial balance at the end of the year to make sure that it is accurate and that it's free of material misstatement whether due to fraud or error, and that's what we do. Now, if, as discussed before, we cannot, if we were going to tell, if we were going to decide which funds you can have open or closed, we'd be making management decisions and we would be impairing our independence. So something I do want to show is that two thousand one dash five delinquent tax revolving fund revisions to accounting after public act one twenty-three of nineteen ninety-nine, it's a mouthful, that it discusses that the treasurer has the option, not must, has the option to close out funds after the tax sales have been completed, but they do not have to. That is up to the treasurer and the county commissioners have to all then approve transferring those funds. Now, one thing I thought was interesting that I did want to point out so that it can't be, th- there's no question as to the allowabilities. If you go down, I think it's two pages, Tom. Right there. When you look at the examples. Um, you know what? Go up one page. I might have been off one. Oh, no, you gotta go one more. I'm sorry. Yeah, go down another page, one more. Okay, right there. If you look at the example in that public act, their example actually includes ten years of delinquent tax revolving funds. So you are definitely not, or were not way out of, out of line with what the state would see. Next accusation, very similar, not closing out previous due-to-do-from balances. Closing out of due-to-do-from balances would require the management to approve actually moving funds, moving dollars around, and that's not our, our place to make those management decisions for you. Again, our place is to audit the numbers that you have and audit the balances that you have at the end of the year.
Do you ever provide recommendations?
We do. We do. And like to speak of the delinquent tax revolving funds, there were absolutely times over the years that we would make the comment in the treasurer's office to say, you know, you could probably close those out. You know, there, you've got several of them in there. And, and the former treasurer would say, yeah, we probably could. We'll work on that for next year. Okay.
You, did you make that suggestion because you, in your professional opinion, think that they should have done that?
I'm, I'm not going to say they should or shouldn't have. I'm going to say that.
Thing that commissioners did not hear. If you said it in there, the commissioners didn't hear it.
It was more of a, you know, you could do that if you wanted to, but it's not, it's not a requirement either.
I gotta say, with your, the discussions you and I had over the year, I would be asking you for your opinion on, on what should be done, only because I'm not going to get another expert in there, okay? In the first couple of years on the commission, I was for sure in the minority. And there was no way that I was going to get two other commissioners to agree to me, with me, to get somebody in there to take a look or any office, for that matter. Any, any of our offices.
Is there a reason you wanted to? I guess were you, I don't understand.
Well, for, for things like that, like, like having years and years of delinquent funds still open. If somebody came to me and said, Craig, you know, your county shouldn't have that many out there. Well, there was no way that I was going to come to a commissioner meeting and say, hey, uh, let's get, let's get another company to come in and take a look. Because when the state came here and told us what's fund balance thing, that was brought up about having somebody come in and find out about that. And we were told right then by the clerk and the treasurer, hey, and the chairman of the board at that time, we already got an accounting firm. We don't need another one. We don't have to have anybody looked at anything. And I asked the question, then what are we going to do different? We don't have to do anything different. We're doing everything fine. And that's what they told me. And I said, well, maybe we should have somebody come in and take a look. I mean, it's the state of Michigan. It's coming, make a complaint.
But what she just said, and unless I misunderstood, was what was happening was not wrong.
Okay.
Am I correct?
You're absolutely correct.
Hey, hey.
So the treasurer.
I could not tell my wife something. I'm not lying. Yeah, I get it.
The treasurer, as we've been told numerous times, is, is an elected official. We're not his boss or her boss. They make their own decisions. Correct.
It's just the commissioners get blamed.
Well, I don't think, I don't think, I've not, I have not heard anyone being blamed for commissioners being blamed, but I'm not at all your meetings. I'll be fair to that. But I did hear myself be accused of allowing funds to remain open and allowing the due-to-do-from balances to not be transferred. And I'm stating that is not my role. That is not my place as your auditor to make those decisions. These are your financial.
Well, I don't know all the answers to everything and, and, and I've had to say this to people just as recent as a couple of days ago. I don't have enough information to give them an answer out, but I gotta hear it. And if I'm gotta ask questions, I'm going to ask questions. I mean, how else am I going to know? This has been my thing since I got here, is I'm going to ask questions if I don't know something. And I gotta take the answers they give me.
As far as recommendations, we, in an audit level, make recommendations all the time. But if it's not a finding, if it's not a compliance issue, if it's not an internal control weakness that is required to be communicated, that doesn't mean we're going to put it in writing to the state. We're going to have that conversation with the person that it's related to to say, you know, I might consider doing this, but it's not wrong the way you're doing it. Those, those conversations happen all the time. But it's not going to go into writing if it's not a compliance issue or a, an internal control issue or something that we just, there, there could be other odd reasons, but just a regular recommendation, no.
Go ahead, Sydney.
Number seven, intentionally decided to use an incorrect fund to cover the requested board, board transfer. There was absolutely nothing intentional there. This was simply a situation where after the audit field work was about done, the, the individual, the employee came to us and said, the board just approved a transfer this, from this fund to this fund. And my team grabbed the wrong fund. Simple as that, but that's why it's a draft. And that's why we provide those adjusting journal entries to management to review and to approve and to sign off on. And as soon as it was brought to our attention, it was corrected prior to the audit being finalized and prior to the draft, um, the report being submitted. So that was an error, but that's why we have the review processes that we do.
It wasn't an intentional.
It was not an intentional error. It was not an intentional decision. Um, number eight, submitted the audit to the state before the board presentation. So that was the, the claim was that I came into the board meeting in two thousand twenty and said that I, I'd already submitted. I do not recall saying that, but I'm, I'm not denying saying that because Tim and Karen both stated that they heard me say that. So when they told me that, it did surprise me because that's not my practice. So I went back and I reviewed when it was submitted to the state versus when my board presentation was, and it was not submitted before the board presentation. So immediately I contacted Tim and Karen and I told them that I must have misspoke because I had already, I checked and it was not submitted in advance, and so I, I must have misspoke at the meeting. Maybe I intended to say it was ready for a submission. I don't know. But I had corrected that with them immediately when they, when they questioned me on it. Regardless, just for the record, this is our audit opinion. The management has already approved in writing the draft financial statement. So there is no obligation for us to wait for the board's presentation for us to submit. We have many municipalities who their board presentations aren't until after it's due to the state. We can't possibly wait for those. So I just want to be clear that there is no requirement for that. But that is not my practice. I wait until the board presentation unless it's going to miss a deadline. Next, the next claim. They, the claim was made in the last meeting that a peer review does not include the review of adjusting journal entries. I believe it was said that it's just the end of the year stuff and that's it. That is absolutely false. We are peer reviewed every three years and when they select their files, they take everything, beginning balances, journal entries, ending balances, all communications. They receive the entire audit file.
When's the last time?
Twenty twenty.
You were reviewed?
I think December twenty twenty is our last date.
That's the date of it, yes.
And was there any findings? Was there any issues? Was there anything?
No.
Review letters attached to that copy of the engagement letter that you had up there.
Yep, I think it's, it's letter B, but the attachment is included there. It'll look like that. Uh, claim number ten, created fake letterhead. So in providing the draft financial statements to management to review and approve. Now, you gotta think back. This is end of two thousand twenty. You had just had your clerk and treasurer of many, many years leave and the new clerk and treasurer step in all right during that audit time. One thing I want to point out is just like you have a former treasurer and a new treasurer that have different operating styles and philosophies, the same thing goes with overall management. And with the previous clerk and treasurer, they always would like for us to give them a boiler, boilerplate baseline can document when it came to the things that they had to prepare, like a management's discussion and analysis, a corrective action plan. They liked having that template to start with to adjust and manipulate with their information. So I always provided that to them to be a benefit and to be a resource and an assistance to them. Nothing more than that. So what happened was when the draft was ready, we submitted the draft to the clerk, the treasurer and the county administrator. It was clearly marked draft across every single page. And I had taken the previous year's corrective action plan and just changed Dwight's name to Karen and had the boilerplate information for her to have a starting point rather than starting from scratch, trying to be helpful. Can you go to, right there, she's got it, or Tom's got it up. There was nothing intentional here. We made sure it was marked draft. We didn't want it to be able to go through our system and get missed, but the draft was never taken off until we had the new letterhead and Karen's wording that she wanted used. Now, if we go to the next page, I'd like to point out that as soon as Karen brought this to my attention, she says, please find the corrective action plan. Uh, go down a little bit more, Tom. It says, going forward, please do not create letterhead or audit responses with my name listed without my knowledge or permission. I immediately was just thrown back because that was never the intention. If you scroll up, right away I replied, I apologize for the misunderstanding, Karen. The intent in the draft was for the M D N A in the CAP, corrective action plan, to be a placeholder for you to adjust and personalize. We will leave them blank in the future for you to draft. It was very much not intentional and we made that clear immediately. Last accusation that I'd like to address.
Claim.
Claim?
Claim sounds similar.
Okay, the last claim I'd like to address is that it was said that we have had the same audit team for fifteen years without any fresh eyes. I wish that were true because that would mean that I can keep staff that long. But public accounting is a very, very tough, hard field, so our turnover is very high. Over the last fifteen years, I went through our audit schedule. And over the last fifteen years, we have had twenty, twenty different CPAs, uh, partners, managers, senior staff on the Ogma County Audit. Only one person has been part of the Ogma County Audit during that duration, and that's not me. It was someone who started as an intern and worked their way up. Um, twenty different people have had their eyes on the Ogma County Audit and I have only been the partner on the Ogma County Audit for four or five years. Something like that, four or five. Regardless.
Gotta be five. I've been here five.
I said, I've been on it. I've not been the partner in charge. Um, regardless, we have a very strong quality control process in place. A quality control process that requires that an auditor that has significant continuing education to qualify them for this quality control review, who has no hands-on experience in that audit, they've not been part of the audit during that fiscal year, they come in and do a full file and financial statement review before the audit is finalized. We do that every year without fail. While there is no requirement to switch audit firms or switch audit partners, we are willing and are, are offering to rotate the audit partners for Ogma County so that there is no question on that, that recurring client concern or risk. And we will rotate the partners so that Don Brandon is the new audit partner on Ogma County. And this will provide for one new partner, one new senior staff and two new staff in, I'm sorry, one new senior and two new staff to the Ogma County engagement who have not been out here.
When does your contract expire? When does your contract expire?
Twenty four, twenty twenty four. Right? Yeah, I think so.
Redone Cindy, I'm sorry.
I am.
That's what I said the last time was, you know, I'd like to see that through throughout the options. You know, if they can take and switch it out, bring in a new team. I'm fine with that. I think it's.
Commissioner Scott.
I think a lot of those claims, I think they're just misunderstandings between parties. I think, and maybe they came across a little harsh during a meeting. But I think a lot of those claims are just misunderstandings. Whether you were intentional or not, I don't know there. If you were to sell, if you were to go into a county that you have not been doing business with. And they were doing business with a firm for an extended amount of time. Would you try to convince them to go with you because they need a different set of eyes?
That is not what I recommend actually at all. I would argue to the contrary, while there are benefits to that. There's also significant benefits with having some experience. That understands the ins and outs of that county that are gonna pick up on something going on.
Then you probably wouldn't go to an RFP then. You wouldn't wanna go and sell yourself to a county that it's got a long term relationship then.
If they have a long term relationship and they're only going through the motions of an RFP because they're required to and they have no intentions of changing. I'm gonna think long and hard before I put the energy into that RFP. One of the first questions I ask when I sit down with someone that is on an RFP is. Why are you looking? What do you not like about your current audit process? And if they say, oh, no, I love it. The board's making me.
Okay.
Well, then I might not fight as hard because if they've got a good service. Why change that?
That's fair. Just wanna know. Don't know if you don't ask.
Good.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I don't have a, uh, it's gonna take me a while to chew all this up.
Okay, I got a couple of things and I'll I'll do two and then I'll go on to Commissioner DeWick, or I'll come back. The first thing is, is I I do strongly dislike what happened. I was not at that meeting two meetings ago. Um, but I did watch it. Um, I think that I've had four separate conversations with with Tim about the negativity and how it's got to stop about previous administration, previous employees. I don't find that productive at all. The contract I was, when I first came aboard. Um, it was discussed with with, I think Commissioner Scott, you were in Commissioner DeWick, or you were here as far as I was in agreeance. You guys have been in place for an extended period of time. We were trying to put contracts out for bid. So I believe we we did. Um, we discussed it amongst us commissioners. It was voted on. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh.
You gave us a bid, you stuck with the same rate. I lost because I did vote for a different firm to come in for fresh eyes. But I was out outvoted, obviously. I believe we should need to stick with this contract unless something can be brought to us that is concrete and illegal. Um, we signed a contract. I don't agree with the timeframe of this. I don't think the commissioners. I was not aware. I did receive an email from the administrator after this meeting took place. I don't agree with a recommendation of you guys writing to to remove or written request to to exit your contract. I think that should have been brought to us first. Um, I think we should have been aware of it. I think if I'm not mistaken, we were aware after the meeting had occurred. And what you stated in the beginning, unless I misunderstood, was at that initial meeting. You guys were provided options. Did I misunderstand that?
I think the initial meeting was. Tim was uncomfortable with the situation. He wanted to recommend to the commissioners that they exit the contract. But there's no termination language, so how do we feel about canceling the contract or ending the contract? What were our thoughts? Kind of feeling us out. And when we said no, but we'll entertain rotating auditors. Um, or audit partners. Tim came back and requested that we decided the easiest for us to cancel the contract that he would be recommending to the board. That the can't, that you cancel the contract, but it would be easier if we did that.
Commissioner DeWick.
Well, I thank you for um, and explaining your side of the story. I do think that things could have happened differently. And we could have worked this out without having to go through all this. But I don't see any reason or any reason for us to change auditing firms right now. I don't even really see a reason to change our team at all. But if you guys wanna do that, that's fine. But I do apologize for uh you having to go through this. It was not needed.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Me as well, and I appreciate all the time that you put into that.
Thank you.
May I say say one thing?
Please.
Based on those comments there. And the way Cindy presented herself here today. And presented the facts of what we do and how we do it. I appreciate you taking the time and listening to us and accepting our responses. But also, um, for Cindy's case, I don't know why you would not want her on this audit. Because she has so much knowledge of this county and how it operates. And how how to do things right that taking her off this audit to me is an injustice to the county as a whole.
That's fair, but I I mean, the stress level would have to be through the roof with with everything that's occurred over the last year. So I, I mean, she should have a say in that as well.
I would, I would be happy to to go either direction that the county wanted, but but yes, I'm sure it would be a challenging environment, but I've worked through challenges before and would do whatever is in the best interest of the county.
Commissioner Scott.
Oh.
Back to you.
Back to me, yeah. Well, I I thank you for coming in and 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 I don't think that this is that far out of the norm because we we every, every story has more than one side. A lot of them have more than two sides and and we've had to work those things out many times. Yes, we've had to change the regime. Both with elected officials and with bringing in an administrator that this county never had before. And the way an administrative administrator in a, in a, in a government situation. Makes the, makes everything happen differently, easily. That's my belief. I've been one, I've, I ran on the, on the premise of getting an administrator. And I'm totally happy that we did. And I am totally satisfied with the pick that we got. But I appreciate you, the firm coming here, of course, you know. And maybe I I asked questions throughout the history that probably you couldn't answer. Or I expected an answer from you in a, in some way. I'm not saying I'm not saying it's right or wrong or whatever. I'm just saying this is, this is what, when you, when you, when we had it. Conversations, I was looking at you as an expert in the field of auditing. I understand auditing and not, and not, you're not a manager, you're not hired to be a manager's consultant. I understand that. You're there to count the, count the numbers. I get that. I've worked with those being counters a lot. But um I'm glad we could iron some things out. A lot of, if if it's not been ironed out with somebody else, a lot of these claims have been ironed out with me. I'm just still, for the time that I've been on a commission, I know. And I'm, I know that people within this government, not the auditors, but within the government have lied to me. Yeah, I'm saying it.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay.
We just talked about negativity. Moving forward.
Well.
Choose kindness.
Politely lied to me, all right?
I wanna say Cindy.
Yeah, I gotta answer to the public and and so many times I've answered with misinformation that was given to me. And I don't care for that.
I I wanna say thank you for being respectful to previous administration and current administration in your presentation. I I I I find that entirely respectful, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
We're good. Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Item four A, we got opiate settlement update.
Well, there's no update, just to remind the board. This on the agenda, we'll keep it on the agenda because we're waiting for the state to develop some rules about how the opiate settlement funding to be used. We're particularly interested in the prosecuting attorney software and the funding of things to make sure that those things are gonna be acceptable. And so far, the indications are that they will be, we just don't have final bill yet. So we'll continue to keep this on here. If there is an update, then.
And the nine one village, is that gonna be on the next?
Probably on the next. Um, we're just tweaking some final sentences in the, in the actual language itself.
Excuse me, word we add on the.
We're on four B.
No, the opiate.
We, we, nothing new. We're just watching it for that prosecuting attorney.
Nothing's come our way.
Nothing's come yet. It's imminent, but just not yet.
In four B.
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not ready to present yet. We're close.
Okay.
You don't have language.
Correct, from our legal team, correct.
Right, so most likely by the next council meeting, we'll have it.
Okay, next disclosure regarding real estate agency relationships.
You've got that in the materials. The housing authority has, uh, they're not the housing authority, but their housing contractor, whatever we want to call them, with our housing program. Uh, had a house come back to them, uh, that had been, uh, understand when they do, um, housing rehabilitation program. Lean is actually put on that house so that if there is a sale or anything else goes on, they get their their funds back. And that's how the rotating fund or revolving fund works. In this case, the entire house came back and uh, Leanne would like to put that on the market. What you're looking at here is just the standard disclosure for real estate agency relationships. That's to say that they would be the exclusive representative or the exclusive real estate agent for that house to list it, put it on the market, get it sold. Uh, so that's a contract that has to come to you. And like I said, it's a pretty standard form.
So that'll be out for a resolution?
It will be, and of course they'll uh, send it down to council for review as well.
And we've been doing this? This isn't something?
We don't have many houses that have been sold.
Usually don't come back.
Okay.
Usually those people are pretty doggone good about making their payments.
Yeah.
We'll come fifty thousand, eight percent of fifty thousand. That's basically our, our commission that we have to pay.
There's, it's, there's a breakdown on there, what? There's a separate page that shows. She's got three different prices in there. It shows what the commission, what the closing costs are. I'd looked this over about an hour this afternoon.
Well, I looked at it a little bit there too, but uh, the thing is, are we within our our, our.
It's on page fifty.
Our policy on, on uh on doing this, you know, I mean, this is a contractor. This isn't any different than somebody to paint the room in here. If are, are we below the threshold of half need it out for a contractor?
I mean, sending RFP out? Yeah, I don't know, because that's gonna depend on what the sale price of the house is.
Well, if if they get the asking price, then the commission, seven percent, which is forty two hundred dollars.
So that would be under the.
So it'd be under that five thousand dollar cap.
That's just a question, that's all.
But understand if it's listed for more and sells for more, it could.
Or if they get more offers, but I think, I think the listing price is fifty, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it was listed as fifty.
Yeah. So like she included the.
We can include tax.
The forty, forty five and fifty, depending upon what she actually sells.
Government, I'm not sure.
With the number of realtors we have in the county.
Right.
We're just selling, so there would be tax on it, I think. With the number of realtors we have in the county, I don't want so many coming to me saying, how come I didn't get a chance?
So how come this hasn't happened in the past? The county owns quite a few.
Well, this is gonna be more than this one property too.
This one house, um, and that we're dealing with, and we don't get these, I mean.
This isn't really county owned property.
So this is one that went up for tax on, nobody bought it? I'm not understanding.
It's, it's the housing commission, Leanne Fisher.
Okay.
Her group.
Yep.
But they rehabbed this house. They provided the funding for rehabilitation.
Okay.
The people then owe the, uh, lean is put against the house.
Okay.
And they're supposed to take and pay back incrementally, like a mortgage. Backs the housing commission. The amount of money that they put into it. I don't even know if there's any interest, but anyway, it's, it's, it's a yeah, it's a low interest, low interest mortgage loan. These people defaulted on it, so therefore it went back to the housing commission.
Okay.
So the housing commission has got the, got foreclosed on it. Yep, they got it back.
We own it.
The housing commission owns it. The county does, the housing commission does.
But they're an umbrella underneath the bus. So we're just doing this for them. Okay.
We have to give it our blessing.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So, but they have, we have to follow the same policies, don't we? Or not?
We would, but again, we're still compliant.
We're under that five thousand cap.
Under the threshold.
I I know, I am, I understand the lean process and everything else. I was on the Habitat Board years ago. And, you know, there was a Habitat house that was, that was rehabbed or built, built from scratch right in town. Back then, they didn't put leans on it, on, on it. The lady moved in, sold the house for a lot of money and walked away with a lot of money. And that left a bad taste with a lot of the people that went out there and donated material and help for this lady to make sixty, seventy grand on a brand, on a free house. So after that, they started putting leans on them.
Any, any other questions? You guys okay putting this on for resolution?
Yes.
D, region nine area agency on aging proposed twenty twenty three, twenty twenty five multi-year plan. Foraging services.
For aging, not for aging.
Not for aging.
One time, I I might autocorrect, but no, so.
Another claim we have about the
Go ahead.
Misspelling.
The um area agency on aging, uh, what they do across the state is put together these multi-year plans, which then impact the local commission on aging and some of the programs that they do. What they ask the counties to do within the region is to adopt or to recognize that plan through resolution, through a formal act. Uh, so that they can go about implementing it. And I believe our locals, mission on each, do receive some revenue from that.
They definitely do. They, this through NIMSCA, and there's a, um, there's a representative that's on the board. The last meeting, she briefed us on this, this was gonna become, and I didn't know how soon it was gonna, I didn't know this was gonna come this soon. But um, it it's a standard thing that they do. It's a five year plan. You know, they put a lot of time and effort into it. Look at this thing and it's like fifty six pages, I wanna say. It's, it's a huge document. So it just allocates funding to the Ogma Commission on Aging.
So this will go from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five?
Right.
Okay, so we need that in for resolution, correct?
Yes.
Questions, guys? The Ogma Township DDA tax sharing agreement.
Okay, this will not require a resolution. Um, we do have a boilerplate agreement that was provided to our council. And what I would suggest is that, um, you know, commissioners were interested, wanted to volunteer to sit down with me and with Ogma Township to work through that. To see if we can come to uh mutual kind of understanding of what that capture should look like moving forward. And again, this is, uh, I believe about a thirty year from that mistaken plan that we're talking about. This township, recall, is one of those post ninety four DDAs. Uh, and we have an agreement with them now. Uh, so this would be a matter of, you know, going forward, how does the agreement work? How much of the tax do you want captured? And we negotiate back and forth with the township again, hopefully to come with a, come back with a mutually agreeable distribution of how that would work. The timing on this isn't something that we have to have done like a month, but I believe we have three next year before the current plan expires. So if we wanted, I mean, this clearly there's some pushing on the time. But I think it would help, uh, at least uh uh, with the township, uh, with their confidence, if a couple of commissioners would sit down with them. with the township, uh, with their confidence, if a couple of commissioners would sit down with them, go over it, come back with a recommendation.
They came to us already requesting a hundred percent capture, correct?
Well, that's what they said.
Okay, which they were requesting the same as what the other DDA captures, correct?
No, no, the other ones capture more villages than just, they were asking just for the six mills of the county cap.
Not sure. And that's.
That's right. I think they wanted everything.
Oh, I understood. So you're asking for individuals, you wanted to commission?
I think two is a good number.
I'd be more than happy to volunteer my services as an old retired guy. It's got nothing there to do with life.
Are you on any other DDA?
No.
Cause you are cracked.
I am on that DDA.
Okay. So you're, you, you agree you're obsolete from this, this, uh.
There would be a conflict.
Obsolete?
abstain?
I'm not obsolete from anything.
Yeah, you are obsolete.
I'm on the Westphal Township DDA, so.
I will volunteer. I don't know much about the DDA, so this will be a learning, learning, uh, curve for me and a learning experience. So I will definitely, if you guys are okay with that. Okay. That's all you needed from that?
Yes, and we'll set something up. I'll get with you and try to get the date.
Okay. Item G, the rape river drainage, you're gonna forward that email to us?
I am.
For legal counsel? Um, public comment, item five. This relates to any subject matter. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Is there any public comment in the room? Hi.
Hi, my name is Marie Claire and, um, I'm here to speak on behalf of Cindy. Um, I've known her since, um, twenty eighteen where we've shared together on a nonprofit board. Um, I've come to know her as a hardworking, um, by the books type of woman. As a board, we look to her knowledge and insight when it comes to finances, policies and bylaws in our organization. She seeks to understand the right way to do things. If there's ever a gray area, her counsel is always to lean towards doing the safe side of things and to be above the minimum requirements. I admire this about her and regularly seek her advice in business and finances because the upright and knowledgeable person she is. To have this situation appear as questioning her character saddens me because I've seen how hard she works to stay above reproach, doing things morally, ethically and legal in her professional life and as well in her personal life.
Thank you. Did you get a name? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? Did you want to speak? Come on up, ma'am. Can you clap?
Can I sit?
You can sit right there. Yeah, just, Tom, tell you up absolutely. Tom just.
The microphone.
Tom just requested for, for.
I'm going to sit in the chair, Maggie.
Please. Thank you.
For the camera and the microphone to hear, the microphone.
We've got a lot of people on, on Zoom. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice to see you.
What else?
And you are?
Maggie Robinson. And I was county treasurer from nineteen ninety-one to two thousand and seven, sixteen years. I took care of the deficits. Okay? I, the county treasurer, took care of deficits upon board motion. I saw the deficit. I would warn them. I says, you have an upcoming deficit and they say, well, keep us some tabs. And as the year goes on, it gets worse. And I nag them and I nagged them and I nagged them until they finally said, okay, what do you recommend? And so basically, the audit never showed a deficit. A unique situation here, unfortunately, that your taxes are coming in so late in your fiscal year. You know, we're into what? How many months now? We're seven months into your fiscal year. You don't have any money yet because of summer collection. It's, it's disastrous, you know, and it changed. I don't know what year that was.
Hope seven has started. I'm very.
Yeah, it wasn't like that.
When you were leaving, they changed.
And so something had to have, that should have been done back then with regards to, oh, we got a problem here. And whether it would be a letter of credit or whether you'd be borrowing or whether you'd have to lean on the refrigerator, but you, but it wasn't you. It was your.
Predators.
Predators would have to, um, address the situation that was going to be compounded every year. It's going to be compounded because right now you're negative cash of around four point one million. And, uh, you don't know if you can last through the rest of the year. So you have that problem also, which maybe you can, your county administrator could probably help out on, but it is indeed a problem. And it compounded then every year because it wasn't like that when I left. So fifteen years ago, that didn't exist. But I just want to tell you that the county treasurer has the ability to remove the deficit with board action. Uh, my prime example is probate childcare was always in the deficit, always. And they always had to subsidize. They thought they put it into the budget enough and it never was. And the typical appropriation was like ninety thousand dollars a quarter. So the first, in the beginning of January, the old fiscal year, I would give them ninety thousand dollars for that quarter. And I didn't want to give them three hundred and sixty thousand because it would screw the books. So I skew the books. So both. And so I would give it to them in January and they'd be out, they'd be out of money in February, mid-February. And I'd go to the commissioners, they're out of money. And so they're on notice. They're on notice that their ninety thousand dollars only lasted six weeks. And then you repeat that throughout the year. So all along, they knew that they were going to have to choke up some real big money for them at the end of the year. And it wasn't a surprise to them. They knew. They didn't like it, but it wasn't a surprise.
Now, this is back in the day when there were seven commissioners. There was three and in yourself on a budget committee that would meet many times with these department heads.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I think it's legendary that Bev Scott would hawk even the judges.
Yeah. And Mark remembers those.
Oh, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your words.
And if you. Good luck because it is a difficult problem with the taxes.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Sir, come on up.
My name is Jeremy Beulie and I had a list of things that I wanted to discuss that I changed while sitting and listening to your meeting. When I first came up here and I waited to the end because I wanted to hear how this played out instead of go at the beginning and then just leave. First of all, I came here to thinking I was going to defend the character and the integrity of Cindy. And I think she did an excellent job of doing that herself. And I'm thankful that you guys as commissioners were humble enough to apologize. I heard it with my ears. At the same time, I feel like, and this isn't pointed at you, but I'm wanting to say it on record that while I understand there's freedom of press, um, I've been a client of Stevenson and Company for, oh, probably at least a decade. I've known Cindy on multiple levels for several years. My daughter babysat for her and I'm, uh, most recently in a nonprofit facet. A person's integrity is one of their most important assets. I think you guys would agree with that in their character. A lot of people may not be on this call or sitting here at this meeting for her defense. The Herald was quick to put all of these claims, as you said, into that paper. And I would like, that can have a rippling effect on her livelihood, on Stevenson and Company's livelihood and their business moving forward as a result. And I would like to set the record straight. Hopefully it will make also the front page of the Herald that she was able to meet all these claims, uh, with answers. And not only that, do it with integrity, no matter what questions were thrown at her. So while I was up here to defend her integrity, I don't feel like I need to do that. I want to thank you guys for the way you guys were humble enough to apologize and to listen to her. But at the same time, you know what? They have a livelihood and they're a local business within our community as well. And there are a lot of people in this community that use them um, for their accounting services, including myself. So that's what I have to say. So thank you. And hopefully the Herald's listening and they'll put that on the front page of paper also.
Thank you, sir. Did you get his name?
Jeremy Beulie, but how do you spell the last name?
B E W L E Y.
Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public count on the phone?
Mom would, but she doesn't.
She doesn't know how to unmute. Could I have a motion to adjourn? I'll, I'll second that. We're gonna, uh, adjourn at eight ten. All in favor? Thank you, everybody for coming.